You guys can hear me, right? Delft. Um. Can we could with the three councilwomen mind doing the same, the Pledge of Allegiance tonight together? Would you be okay with that? Since it's International Women's Day?
You mean come off mute and say it?
Yeah, I think from now on, instead of just being silent completely, I think it's better to have someone say it. Um, just one person. And I think tonight, instead of having myself or someone, I being that it's International Women's Day, I think if the three female council members just said it together, that would be great. Would you all be okay with that?
Sure. Yeah, great.
Okay. All right. Um, so Josh, give me a second if you could. And can you lower the, can you take the flag away because I can't see everyone? Let's see. So Molly, I don't have the um. The international. Today's International Women's Day. Do you have that that Josh can put up when the time is right and I'll read from there?
I'm sorry, I was never given it.
Okay. I'll get it in just a second. Okay, I can't switch screens here. Josh. You have it, right?
I have not seen it yet either. I think just you and possibly Laura were working on that.
Right. Okay. I just got to get this cursor to get to the other screen. All right. Hang on a sec. Let's see. Just one moment. All right, just a sec. Okay. Um. Go to the other screen. All right. I guess we'll try. I can't get the other screen to work, so um. I can't see anyone right now. Um.
Well, we can hear you. Can we just kind of proceed?
Uh, none until I.
Mayor, you options at the top.
I can't even see. All I see is a flag in my corner. So they're they're okay. All right. We're gonna try. I finally got everyone back. Okay. Go ahead, Josh.
We are.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, March 8th, 2021 at 5:30. It's actually 5:45. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be accessible by phone by dialing the number we've provided on our website. And the meeting ID number also provided on the website. Comments are only allowed during designated portions of the meeting. To speak during the meeting, press the raise hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine on your phone. Please refrain from raising your hand until the mayor has announced that he has opened the public comment portion of the meeting. Your name or the last four digits of your phone number will be called out when is your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. All speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. Okay, at the moment, I'd like to call to order. I'd like to have roll call. Just one moment. It's been about five hours today dealing with internet problems, so. Uh, Councilmember Abersole.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Woo.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Frannich.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah.
Thank you. We from staff, we have City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Uh, city clerk Molly Townsley.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
Finance Director David Ronebach.
Here.
Community Development Director Katrina Knutson.
Here.
Assistant City Clerk Josh Stecker.
Here.
Chief of Police Kelly Bucy.
I'm here.
Attorney Daniel Kenny.
Here.
And IT Director Keith Smith.
Here.
And our guest tonight, we have Stephanie Lyle.
Here.
Thank you. And Dr. Jarvis from the Peninsula School District.
Here.
Thank you. And this is Mayor Keen. Anyone that I have not had a chance to call. Great. Uh, yes, Councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to bother you, but I'm getting an echo from whenever anyone speaks, except for when you speak. So I'm wondering if maybe you have two speakers on, maybe lower volume on one or. I just assume when you ever use, because I don't hear the echo, but everyone else.
I'm experiencing the same thing.
Okay, well, we'll see if it gets any better. Um. Being that International Women's Day, I thought it might be appropriate if we had the three council females. Uh, let us join them in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to say it, we'd be happy, we'd be honored to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, are there any changes to our agenda tonight? Hi. And I'm going to ask people, I have two monitors of for various reasons. I'm doing this at home, and so it's very difficult. So I have two monitors and the second monitor, all of a sudden it stopped working right now. So I can't see people's. I can see it when you raise your hand, but I don't have that separate screen that shows the names. So either raise your hand like Councilmember Frannich said. Yes, Councilmember Frannich.
Yeah, will we be able to have any, ask any questions about the consent agenda or do I need to pull items off for questions?
No, you had reached me ahead of time. I think, let's start with trying to answer your questions onto the consent. So when we get to the consent agenda, instead of pulling something yet, we'll, we'll see if we can handle those questions. Uh, if they're short. That sounds great. Thank you. And with that, uh, we come to our consent agenda. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Frannich with some questions on the consent.
Yes, thank you. Uh, first of all, on item number three, and I guess this will be a question for Ms. Knutson. Are you there, Katrina?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so under uh, task number 300. When we went to move the. Call Plan Amendment forward for the art installation portion of that, I thought we had language that was was pretty well ironed out and that was gonna be able to move forward at a fairly rapid pace by. Putting this out to Gretie, will this slow the process down?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Frannich. No, um, we are actually expediting this process and I believe Director Langhelm will be giving a staff report regarding this later in the agenda. Since it's a public works application, uh, we expect this work to be, um, conducted. I won't say rapid fashion, but um, we have it set up to go, um, expeditiously.
So this isn't by passing this on the consent agenda with this contract with Gretie, it won't slow the process down?
No, it will, it will not. This actually provides us with some additional capacity to move it faster than we would in-house.
Very good. Thank you very much. And um, my other question was on consent agenda, item number four. Um, you know, normally we are, uh, when we get rid of surplus equipment, um, it is a lot less items than this. And I know in the old days, we used to send it to auction. Uh, we've adopted a new process, apparently where we are, um. Disposing of this through a recycling center or a charity organization. And I'm just wondering if Mr. Smith can, um, speak to the. Method that he has proposed to dispose of this equipment.
Yeah, thanks for that, that question, Councilmember Frannich. Um. This process, uh, was in, in place before I arrived here. Um, so it's really just a continuance of what's been going on for the past couple of years as far as I'm aware. Um. I mean, it's, the equipment that we're surplusing there is, uh, it's reached, it's the end of life. Um, and we have a typical lifecycle maintenance that we have up here for IT related equipment. So a lot of that equipment is reaches into life and in some most cases it's beyond end of life. So, um.
Right, right. But but end of life for municipal purposes is is can be quite a bit different than use of life for the general public. And with this large amount of equipment, um, you know, in in trying to do what's best with the taxpayers' dollars, it would seem to me that, um, we might have wanted to go down the road of trying to, uh, go back to the auction process to try and recoup some of the, some dollars out of this equipment.
Well, um. With the current process, we, there's a, a organization that will come in, uh, take that equipment and they do it at no charge to the city. And they also do a secure destruction of the hard drives, uh, which may contain sensitive information. They also do that at, uh, no charge to the city. Uh, they also do, uh. Degossing of those, uh, those media devices, um, before they are securely destroyed. Again, um, no cost to the city. So it, it, um, it's actually, um, a good arrangement that we have in place because otherwise to obtain those services, it'd be quite expensive to do that.
Well, it it says it will either be sold to either a recycling center or charity organization.
Well, it basically goes to a, um, to a recycling, uh, company. Uh, they, they take that equipment and they securely remove all the, the data and they destroy anything that had any, any data on it. And, uh, they recycle the, the materials, basically.
Dave. Dave, you might address this to a hair because you were here before Keith was with the arrangement that we have with a vendor.
Uh, I haven't been involved totally in it, but pretty, pretty much how it's worked is the stuff, I think what Keith is trying to say is when we. Send the stuff is pretty much junk. It, it really is and nobody really wants it. It's scrap value. And it'll be maybe a break even at best if we went to auction is I think what we found in the past. And so we try to make some good of it and donate it to folks that can actually use it.
Yeah, and that company kind of does that on, on, on our behalf sort of. So, uh, you know, see if there's, if they see that the equipment can be usable, you know, they, they can donate that. But we didn't want to have to kind of be involved in that process directly. So, uh, it's kind of better to, uh, kind of delegate that off to a third party.
So I, I, I'm assuming that, I mean, so we're, we're depending on this third party to wipe every, all the information off of these devices?
Or are they, they do it onsite and they provide certificates after the fact.
All right. Well. So. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, go ahead. Go ahead, Bob.
I, I failed to mention, there was a public comment that was submitted on one of these agenda bills that's in the consent agenda. It's on item, item, uh, consent item three. It's regarding the comprehensive plan amendment. They asked this right into the record. I wasn't sure exactly where to put it, but, uh, I can read it at this time if you'd like me to.
Sure. The one thing, um, if council, if they have questions on items in the future, if, if they can give us notice prior to the meeting, maybe to talk to staff so that, um, we're watchful of people's times, that would be great help. So go ahead, Bob.
This is, uh, this is regarding comprehensive plan amendment. I believe this is apropos to this item. Says, uh, Dear Mayor Keen and City Council Members, I'm writing to you regarding the comprehensive plan amendment you passed at the February 2021. Council meeting. It is my understanding that at your meeting tonight, you will be voting on approving $20,000 to re-study and advise changes to the comprehensive plan. You may once again set back the native art carving placement and dedication as the new study is not to be completed until 2022. Because your council meeting is tonight, I am writing as a citizen, not as a member of the Native Honoring Committee. I want to begin by reminding you or informing you, if you are new to the city administration, about the time we have spent on the Native honoring project and the complications which will occur if we have to add another year to our project. The first meeting of our honoring committee was held in early 2016. We all agreed that there was nothing in the city of Gig Harbor that honored or even recognized indigenous people who resided here for hundreds, if not thousands of years prior to settlers' arrival and the beginning of the harbor's change. We decided to request time to. To address the mayor council and ask for permission to have a carved honor art object to display at what was then Austin Estuary Park. We titled the idea as the Native Honor Project. The council accepted the idea and on July 25th, 2016, passed resolution number 1039 regarding a native figure to be placed at the park. From that time, our honoring committee began the creation of a plan for the art. We envisioned a carved human figure depicting the subsistence lifestyle of our, of the local natives. We next began working on the community acceptance of the idea. We received written acceptance from the Parks Commission, Harbor History Museum, and vocal support from friends. With our positive responses, we created a budget of $150,000 to complete the art and began seeking financial help. We met with local organizations, the Art Commission, and the Pialp Tribal Council. All factions contributed to offered money. Monetary assistance also came from the Gig Harbor City Council. All the while this was occurring, we expected the Gig Harbor planning department to take the reasonable and responsible position of submitting shoreline approval requests to the Department of Ecology. Unbeknownst to our honor committee, this did not occur, nor was there an explanation. With the comfortable feeling we have, excuse me, with the comfortable feeling of having the budget provided, the honor committee sent invitations for proposals to top carvers from the state and Western Canada. We received a number of proposals and with members of the Pialp Tribe, we selected Guy Kapelman, a Quinault tribal member. That was in 2018. He selected a redwood tree for carving and began work in 2019. He concluded his work in 2020. We were excited about the finished work but discovered that the planning department still had not applied for permitting the installation of the project. Now we are in the fifth year of the project. We're letting our donors and interested citizens down. We're also asking the native carver to store his work in his carving shed where he needs to work on other projects. The city has a current comprehensive plan in existence and this project fits within. Please, we need your assistance in helping us break the logjam of delay. Sincerely, Gary Williamson.
Okay, um. Jeff, you had a chance to speak to Gary today. Would you like to, you were going to speak to that? Would you like to speak now to that?
I can have that staff report now or we can wait. It doesn't matter to me, which you'd like, now I can do that.
Why don't you do that now, please?
Okay. Sure, yeah. Uh, and just, just because I, I emailed, uh, Mr. Williamson, I didn't speak to him on the phone, but. So council is very aware that throughout budget discussions and staffing discussions at the end of 2020 and, uh, into early 2021, the work to, the council aware that that work is for the permitting of the artwork is underway. Um, as Mr. Williamson noted, the, the art has been carved. It's currently being stored in Mr. Kapelman's, uh, art, uh, shed, uh, at his property. Um, working with him to continue to have that stored. Uh, but the last time this topic was discussed before all of council was at council's January 27th study session. Uh, at that study session, Director Knutson discussed this work during her budget and staffing discussion. And then I also discussed this project, um, and the status during my CIP schedule update that had the four various tiers. So as of today, uh, Public Works has submitted a shoreline master program and a comprehensive plan amendment application that occurred, uh, back in January. Uh, that application for the shoreline master program minute would allow public art to be placed in certain areas of the city shoreline. Revisions to the SMP shoreline master program do require comprehensive plan amendment uh, and to go through that process because the entire shoreline master program is a, is legislatively. because the entire shoreline master program is a is legislatively adopted by reference into the city's comprehensive plan. So that is the trigger that we're talking about here. And and it's not necessarily uh that the uh whether the comprehensive plan itself allows art in this area of the shoreline. It's the shoreline master program itself. And so I I did see the examples that identify that in the comp plan that art is allowed and it should be promoted. That's not the question. It has to go back. It goes back to the shoreline master program. Uh and so since we have to update the shoreline master program, just by doing that, we have to go through and update the comprehensive plan because it's referenced in the shoreline master program's reference in the comp plan. So a- as we all recall, uh just last council meeting, February twenty second, Community Development Department placed on uh had a request for comp plan document approval by council. That was approved. So that and this item was on in the docket. It was on the agenda for the complaint amendment. So it is moving forward. Um according to the Department of Ecology, uh the shoreline mess program does have to be amended for the artwork to be placed in the shoreline jurisdiction because the way the city's shoreline mess program is set up right now, it it doesn't have this type of uh allowance for this type of development in the shoreline jurisdiction. And so we are aware that there are people in the community such as Mr. Williamson that are frustrated with the timeline for completing this work. Uh we are trying to follow the process that is in place, that is uh required by city code and state law. I but I can report back to council that we uh are in the process of getting this update completed. Um and I have shared with the Honoring Committee multiple times since November uh the status of the uh uh SMP amendment, the comp plan amendment, and the process that we do have to go through. So that has been shared. And as of today, we're looking at having this shoreline mass program amendment approved. And uh in hopefully June, based on uh the adoption of the um Gretti Associates professional services contract that's on the consent agenda. And then once that is approved, then uh shortly thereafter, uh the comp plan amendment could be brought forward to council for consideration unless Katrina and my councilor Director Knudsen, if you want to uh interject here, let me know if my timeline's a little off, but that's my understanding.
Right.
So and and then we'll and then as and then as we proceed toward that approval, uh we are going to be putting together the actual land use applications that coincide once the uh comp plan has decision has been made. Hopefully, the decision will be for supporting public art in the shoreline. Uh and then one or certain SMP amendments will support that. And then once that's completed, uh we will be able to formally submit land use applications. But we have we'll get all that queued up and ready to go to submit as soon as we have all of the other uh amendments in place.
Thank you. Uh any question, any clarifying questions uh from council? Councilmember Denson.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Langham. I understand on the process and thank you and um Ms. Knudsen's staff for all their work and and moving this forward as quickly as possible. My question is, best case scenario, if everything goes perfectly well, um how soon, I don't even know if you can answer this question, but how soon could that sculpture be installed? Are we talking later this year or two thousand twenty two?
My understanding though, uh Director Knudsen, again, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is though that that because of the Gretti contract and the additional consultant services contract that we are proceeding with, that will allow us to uh um process the application faster. And and then we as Public Works, as the applicant ourselves, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the um design and permit applications for the land use action itself. So that it will be ready to go as soon as the comp plan and SMP decisions are made.
So we're hoping by summer, correct?
Y- yes, we hope to submit those by summer and then it go through their own land use process and I'll let Katrina jump in from here.
Thanks, Jeff. Um Councilmember Denson, just to uh wrap that question up, uh Director Langham and I are going to work together. Our staff will also work together to ensure that this goes forward at the most expeditious rate as possible. Again, the comprehensive plan amendment is the first step and we're hoping to have that completed in June. In the meantime, again, we'll work together to tee up those land use um permits in a way that once they're submitted, that they are um, you know, ready to go through the process and have that done um hopefully this year. So if um everything goes smoothly, that's our anticipated schedule.
Thank you, staff. Uh so do I have a do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Tonight, we have two presentations. Thank you both very much for being patient. I'm sure uh Stephanie and Dr. Jarvis have never had any technical problems in any of their uh field. But um thank you both. And our first presentation is the Harbor History Museum, a year-end report by Stephanie Lyle. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you very much. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Uh I know that's the question everyone asks when they first start on a Zoom call, but uh it's great to be here this evening and thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about what's happening at the museum and what has really happened over the last year, which has been uh an interesting challenge for all of us. Um I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and then uh kind of walk you through some visuals so you can really see what's what's been happening. So okay, as you know, we have the Shenandoah. This is kind of the uh twenty twenty one uh COVID nineteen update of all of the uh fun and interesting projects that have been taking place at the museum. And um I'll I'll get into more details on this later, but I did want to mention that because the Shenandoah project is a heritage capital project through the state of Washington, it was approved by the governor uh kind of at the outset of the COVID nineteen shutdowns to be able to continue on as a heritage capital project uh construction project. So that uh was a wonderful aspect. Uh the Gig Harbor Peninsula Historical Society acknowledges that the Harbor History Museum stands on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish people, uh specifically the Squabop's band of the Pualup tribe. We are honored to be stewards of this ancient place and to share the stories that have defined the Twolcush site over time. Uh a lot of people are not a hundred percent sure what region we actually serve. I mean, a lot of people call us the Gig Harbor uh Historical Museum or any number of other versions of that. Uh we're actually the Harbor History Museum, but we serve a larger region than a lot of people really uh realize. Uh we do work with the Fox Island Historical Society and the Key Peninsula Historical Society to make sure that collections get into the right places. Um but our service area actually extends pretty much the same as the school district um up to the Kitsap County line um through both peninsulas. So even though we're located right in the heart of Gig Harbor and we do have a lot of focus area in that area, we actually serve and collect uh a broader spectrum because as you know, water connects us all in this south sound region. So we are um our our uh service area extends into Tacoma. There used to be a very strong relationship uh for boat builders and mechanics between Gig Harbor and Tacoma as well as down into Olympia. So it's a a a great view of the area to just get a sense of the areas we collect and the areas that we serve. And of course, when you we get to the visitor reports, you'll see that we actually serve a much, much bigger area than this specific region. Um I did want to introduce our Board of Directors. I know a couple of them are on the call this evening. Uh Dennis Hardman is our president. Lee Dede is our vice president. Erica Williams is our treasurer and Steve Aida is our secretary. So um those are the folks that are heading up the museum at this time. And Dennis has stepped in this year as our new president. So we're lucky to have all of these wonderful people on board. Um for those of you that are not a hundred percent familiar with the history of the museum, uh the Harbor History Museum was actually opened, the new site in um twenty ten. And last year, we were going to celebrate our big tenth anniversary, but of course, that was not possible. So we had to transition to a uh a virtual auction and and event. It turned out fine, but we're hoping with all things uh go that go well uh this year, that we'll be able to do our ten plus one anniversary party at the museum. Uh the Historical Society was actually started in nineteen sixty four as the Peninsula Study Group and then later became the Gig Harbor Peninsula Historical Society. And it still retains that name as our official federal tax ID, uh but we have a doing business as Harbor History Museum. So uh just a oops, sorry, a little background. And then, of course, our collections are varied. Uh they range from photographs, ephemera, maps, artifacts, uh images and and oral histories. So we have quite a range of collections that are specific to our area. Um many of you recognize the picture of the Narrows Bridge and probably heard of the Round Rock Contest. So uh all of those are well preserved at the museum. Uh and I put this image of the vine in, which is one of the first two boats actually or ships actually built in Gig Harbor for Gig Harbor uh lumber company. And then uh two two or three years ago, we received, two years ago, we received the Glenn Sutt Basket Collection, which expanded our basket collection by about a hundred different baskets from the northern states up into Canada. So that's a wonderful collection that we'll be able to highlight in um the newly revised Native American section, which I'll get to in a second. Um many of you are familiar with our permanent galleries and we do have seven thousand square feet of of permanent gallery space as well as a thousand foot uh temporary gallery space. And of course, our maritime gallery is about thirty five hundred square feet. So that's a really great project and we'll add a whole new space. I wanted to give you some highlights of what happened over last year. These two exhibits were actually developed for twenty twenty. They're being held over into twenty twenty one since we did have to close in March of last year, mid-March last year, and we're closed through June and then reopened for a while, then reclosed again. So um the Emerson and Portis are uh two boats that are in our courtyard. So that was an outdoor exhibit that we developed um specifically to be able to have COVID safe exhibits when our galleries were closed. And for those of you not familiar with Emerson, that was a custom-built boat that was literally rowed from near Bay to Australia between uh two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And that um boat is on view in the courtyard uh at the museum. And uh Jacob Hendrickson, who who did that amazing feat in the longest solo, non-stop, unaided row in history, uh trained in Gig Harbor and had the boat here for quite some time before he actually set off on his big adventure. And then for uh the other boat, the Portis, many of you know the Portis, but for those that don't, the Portis is actually the boat that gave Gig Harbor its name. So it's a survey gig. It's a replica survey gig built during the state centennial uh that is a ten-person rowing, open rowing boat that was used for surveying the coastline. So uh that is on view in the museum courtyard as well. And then, of course, we have treasures from the Shenandoah and that is all the weird and wonderful things that have been removed from the boat during the restoration process. And um stories thereof are also presented in that space. We also have a traveling exhibition program. And so Bummer Boys is one of our traveling exhibits. It's on view over in Spokane right now, the Northwest Museum of Art and Culture. So it will be there until May, which is exciting to have the show over there. Uh we also during quarantine and COVID nineteen uh kind of invented a new website for the museum that was uh designed to kind of look at the mysteries of history in the area and share some of those stories. So if you haven't had a chance to check that out, um there's all the things you've never knew you wondered about are pretty much on that site and new stories get added uh still uh as we continue on. Uh this year, we're going to try very, very hard uh to have a community event, a history rocks at the museum site this year on September eighteenth, which is actually the date that the museum, the new museum opened in two thousand ten. So hopefully, we'll be able to uh put that whole event together safely so that people can participate and uh stay safe. Um through COVID nineteen, our literary society and our humanities in the harbor programs went virtual. And so our book club stayed going. That's a partnership with the Pierce County Library. And thanks to Cindy Hackett and Karen Brooks from the library, um that program uh switched to a Zoom format and has carried on despite COVID nineteen. Uh we also have transitioned our humanities in the harbor programming uh to feature guests like Jacob Hendrickson, who was the fellow that rode Emerson across the Pacific Ocean. Uh that was a really well-attended and in really interesting event, complete with underwater uh filming of uh creatures that were following him along and things like that. So that was a great program. Uh our our Collections Corner is a new video short that we're doing that gives an uh look kind of behind the scenes into things that are happening uh and in interesting things in the collections that people may not get to see on a day-to-day basis. So Collections Corner videos come out about every every month or so uh kind of featuring a different uh object or two in the collection. Uh we have a new website that is just getting the bugs worked out of it. Thanks to a grant from the LTAC Fund, we're able to rebuild our whole website uh to include a lot more information about visiting exhibits. Uh we'll be able to add school curriculum to that. And one really exciting thing is the addition of an online collection. So we'll be adding more and more artifacts, images, uh collections to that online searchable database uh as we go forward. So uh I'll be sending out more information about that when that site is a one hundred percent live. So I'm also really happy to report that we are an anchor organization for the national uh excuse me, the Maritime Washington National Heritage Area. And that um heritage area extends from Grace Harbor all the way up to the Canadian border. And uh as um museum that is literally right on the waterfront in Gig Harbor, we are definitely part of that heritage area. So we have been helping host some of the uh public education events that the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, who's organizing the heritage area uh has been putting on and will continue to do that as the years go by. We're happy to be in the newly designated uh Twolcush Estuary and uh excited to learn more about that and be working with the Piala Tribe on some of uh our public education elements that will be coming forward. And then I wanted to ex uh oh, sorry, my cat just arrived. The added feature, right? You can never get away. The Maritime Gallery is our big capital project right now, as you're aware. And um that that project has uh started in in twenty seventeen. When I came on board, we did a full evaluation of uh what was happening as far as our collection uh in the museum and really wanted to look closely at how that project was proceeding and how we were going to continue to fund it. I I just throw this picture in here because the boat has changed so much since this time uh that all these rotten bul- bulwarks that are here with the big holes and stuff, those are all gone now and they will be artfully rebuilt soon. The main point here is that we're really looking at uh revising our treatment plans for collections, especially the large objects in collections uh so that we have a better sense of how we can use these object uh objects as teaching objects. So we've been doing a lot of research about big boats in museums and comparing to other projects around the world. Uh we really do aim to have a world-class project here at the Harbor History Museum. And the boat that is on the right-hand side of your screen is actually a boat that is in the National Museum of Ireland. Um it was, it's a boat called the Asgard that they spent many years doing a a full uh conservation, restoration approach. And that's kind of what we're adopting for the Shenandoah. Uh because the Shenandoah went through many uh iterations of its lifetime from nineteen twenty five launch uh to having the bulwarks rebuilt in nineteen fifties, the deckhouse rebuilt in in nineteen forty nine. Uh so all of those uh major uh reconstructions are actually going to be highlighted in the whole process of restoration and conservation. So the right-hand side of the boat will be uh conserved. You you can actually see the woodworking on the Asgard uh and that type of technique with which is a clear coating. The goal was to try to retain as much of the original wood as possible and only replace what was truly damaged and rotten. And so we've done the same technique with the Shenandoah. Um and it'll be really quite remarkable when we Um and it'll be really quite remarkable when we actually get it all done. So the other part of all of this is the fun and interesting object research that goes along with these big projects. And you might wonder what all these pictures have to do with each other. Um of course, we have the Shenandoah, which was documented when it was pulled out of the water in in the year two thousand. Eh or excuse me, it was donated in two thousand, it was hauled out of the water in two thousand three. Uh and it was fully documented, it actually is in the Library of Congress uh here report, which is the Historic Engineering and Architectural Record. And so these are the drawings that were created back in two thousand three, two thousand four, when the boat was hauled out. And then, of course, another character has emerged as part of this story. Um which is this fellow in the in the hat, I don't know if any of you know or have heard of Nick Bez. But he was a big cannery owner, but he was also the son-in-law of this fellow and this woman here, who are Pasco and Matty Doritich. Uh we've had the good fortune to make contact with uh some of their last living relatives. And uh been able to secure some additional photographs for the collection. Which makes it all the more interesting. Uh some people ask us how the boat got its name, and while we don't have actual documentation of this. We do know that the first rigid airship built by the US Navy was called the USS Shenandoah. And uh that actually did circle over Puget Sound, this is actually a made-up picture, just for historic reference. Uh it did circle over Puget Sound on the day that it was here in October of nineteen twenty-four. It was supposed to dock at Fort Lewis and um the winds were too high. And so it had to circle the harbor and circle uh whole Puget Sound. And people came out of their businesses and everyone came out to see this six hundred and fifty-foot airship. And I really have a hard time believing that that didn't influence Pasco, uh Doritich and his son John and Nick Bez. As they were imagining this great new boat that they were having built at the Scansy Shipyard. And last of all, you might wonder what Nirvana has to do with the Shenandoah. Well, that guy in the middle is Chris Nova Selig and his dad was a crew member on Shenandoah. And for one summer, Chris actually uh crewed on the boat. Uh his dad used to say that he was so tired of him sitting around playing his guitar that he needed to put him to work. Well, you can remember how that all turned out. Uh one summer on the boat and he was uh taken off with his band. So um that's our uh little interesting object connections there with all the different stories. And those are just some of the stories that that connect to the Shenandoah. Uh I wanted to share with you uh some visioning that we're doing for the museum galleries. Uh because with the enclosure of the Maritime Gallery, uh that has encouraged us to actually think. How do people use our space and how can we make it even better and more effective? Uh with the honoring project and uh the uh renaming of the Estuary. We felt that this was also an important time to look at our Native American gallery. And really think about how to change that up. And so what we're doing right now, the red arrows on this diagram actually show the pathway that people have to take in order to get into the galleries. Uh this will be a new stairway that will actually open up straight into the main gallery. Uh with these walls being removed, so you're not just walking down a big hallway to get into the gallery. You'll actually go through from our lobby straight through here and be able to access the gallery directly. So that will be a a wonderful new um approach. And will also give us the opportunity to revise and update much of the information. That is currently in the Native American section of the gallery. Uh this will allow us to do uh physical space integration for the Native Gallery and the Permanent Gallery. We'll be able to do content updates. Uh we look forward to student participation in this process. Uh as well as recognition of the Puyallup, Nisqually and Squawson tribes that are um the original occupants of this area. And we have a another exhibit that's in the works called This Place Over Time, which speaks specifically about the museum site. First as a native village, later um with uh the Mills and then Peninsula Light Company uh in all of its iterations. So it'll be an interesting study. Uh in even the the story of the creek is a pretty fascinating uh part of that site. So that'll be an exciting uh adaptation. So I just want to uh let you know that we're making some headlines here and there. Uh we are ranked number one in the Heritage Capital Project Fund for the twenty-one twenty-three biennial. And that is of thirty-six rigorously reviewed gr- uh grant applications. Uh we were actually ranked number one, so we're very excited about that and happy to share that information. Uh the Shenandoah was also declared an American treasure by the Institute of Library and Muse- excuse me. Museum and Library Services and the National Park Service uh through their Save Americas Treasures Grant Program. And that that grant is actually doing the full restoration of the deckhouse. So you'll see a lot of progress being made on the deckhouse right now, uh as it's a two-year grant cycle. Uh the Thunderbird, Thunderbird Hole Number One, that we also have in the collection, that will be featured in the Maritime Gallery. Is undergoing a full restoration and will actually be relaunched. We're working on a partnership with the Boat Shop to relaunch the boat, just as it was in nineteen fifty-eight. Uh re-step the map and the mast and uh re-rig it to sail. So it'll take a couple of victory laps and then come back for permanent display at the museum. Uh last but not least, the big Atlas Engine that we have in the museum collection was recently uh accepted. By two different grants we just heard about. Uh the RPM Foundation has approved a professional uh internship opportunity. For a conservation restoration student to help with the restoration of the engine. And then this will actually get seeded in the Shenandoah in a fairly labor-intensive and com- complex uh process. But it will be a really great, authentic view of the kind of engine set that uh ran these fishing boats. So that is great, and then we're we're being recommended for the um. Excuse me, the Pierce County Heritage uh Commission is recommending this project for a grant as well, to do the actual restoration part. Just to get to our um visitor services um part of the presentation. I did want to mention that it is our comprehensive mission to ensure the preservation of our community memory. To provide lifelong learning opportunities for everyone, to be good stewards of our collection and our campus. To be a resource for residents, to draw tourism to the area. Uh most people don't realize that the um average amount that uh visitors spend in the direct area around a museum. Is about thirty-two dollars, so that definitely has an impact on our local economy. And of course, we want to provide jobs in our community and that is an important part of our mission. Uh our visitor averages per month, as you can see, uh the city started their contribution for general public admission in twenty seventeen. And we were on a great rising trend until COVID hit. Uh and our average dropped exponentially, obviously, because we had to limit our hours and as well as be closed for a while. So those averages have changed, but we're hoping that we'll get some uh bounce back in twenty twenty-one. We've actually already reopened and we are open on Thursday, Friday and Saturday from eleven to four uh every every week. This just kind of gives you a big broad overview, I wanted to go back as far as I could in our data. Uh we were able to get to twenty twelve, but that gives you a sense of what our visitorship has looked like. Uh first when the museum opened and then later uh visitation dropped down. And then uh with city support, our visitation rose once again. And then with COVID nineteen, dropped again, but uh still forging ahead with lots of cool projects, as you can see. Um even though we were closed wo- in twenty twenty. Uh we still saw thirty-three states, visitors from thirty-three states and three countries. It's a a a lower comparison than twenty nineteen, when we had forty-six states and twenty-three countries represented. But um we are on a good trend. And and honestly, this is an interesting perspective because it does show that we are serving, you know. As many or more residents and non-residents um in any given year. So it is important to look at that part of our visitorship to see who we're serving. Because it helps us decide how we select exhibits, what is important to our local audiences versus our visitors. So um it really helps us to shape our messaging and the type of interpretive projects that we uh deliver. This is just a a snapshot of our twenty twenty budget. I show this because I think it is important for people to understand how the museum is funded. Uh we, hey, if you can, I call it the tornado of numbers uh up in the left-hand part of the screen. But uh basically, our budget is made up of uh yearly fundraising efforts through History Rocks. This year or in twenty twenty, we able, we were able to get some PPP funds and COVID relief funds, which made a huge difference for us. Uh we were uh forced to not rehire for some positions that people chose to leave. And so we're we're short-staffed, we're short on budget. Uh but we did manage to survive that year and we um plan to survive into the future. But our budget is signi- significantly reduced this year. Uh hoping to begin to begin to rebuild as we move forward into next year. But as you can see, we are a community-funded museum, the grant from the city is in the line for grants in that fifty-eight thousand. So um that is a good portion of the grants that that were received last year. So it really did make a big difference for us to have that funding. A lot of people ask us, what can we do to help the museum? Uh obviously, people can become members, they can share news about our plans, they can encourage people to visit. Uh sponsors are a big part of uh the museum and what we are able to offer. Some people can sponsor an exhibit, so we have year-long sponsorships this year. Uh people can leave a legacy gift or they can make a donation to support their favorite program. They can provide in-kind support, and of course, I put in here special for the City Council. Uh leverage the RCW twenty-seven forty-eight zero one zero, which is the preservation of historical materials. That allows municipalities to uh provide funding for that service uh through their local historical society. Our capital project donors want to recognize them and give a big thanks uh for without them, we would not be able to move this project forward. All of the state and federal and county grants that we receive are matching fund grants. And so private individuals, as well as some two hundred and fifty people have made contributions to the Maritime Gallery project. As it is today, and we will continue on, we have uh still more than a million to raise. But uh our goal is two-point-five million and we've made it over halfway, so we are very excited about that. Uh last but not least, I do have a short film because everybody loves a film, there you go.
Shandos and ninety-five-year-old, her center was a working boat for seventy-five years.
The boat is amazing, it's one of the last of its kind, it was built here in Gig Harbor. It's part of that entire fabric of why this community is the way that it is today. Our goal is to help people really realize what it's like to step aboard a fishing vessel.
When you can go to a place where history happened or walk around on a vessel that was operational. That people lived on and worked on, it brings the stories to life, it brings history to life.
If that gallery table could talk, there's something besides just the wood and and the net and the fish about the boat. It's what happened in that boat.
So that that is just a teaser for a longer film that is being made. But I just uh wanted to share that with you as it gives you a better sense of what's happening onboard the boat. Uh because it is close to visitors right now, but if anyone has any questions, I'm certainly happy to try to answer them. Thanks, Jenny.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie, that was uh that was great. Now I, you were, we had helped fund with one of your grants uh updating your website, is that correct?
Yeah.
How's that coming along?
Oh, it's great, it's it's actually live right now, uh we are working the bugs out of it. Uh and and as I mentioned, we are uh in the stages of getting um our collection online. So there is a sampler online as well and we'll be adding to that as we go, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Wu.
Yes, Stephanie, thank you so much, that was a really exciting presentation and you did a lot of great things. Even realizing what a interesting and hard year twenty twenty was. So thank you for continuing to to draw attention to the wonderful things our museum does. Um there is going to be some federal funds coming along, is there anything for the museum at all?
Well, it depends on what the funds are allocated for, do you mean uh for the COVID relief funds?
Right.
Yeah.
Small businesses, I think, right?
Yeah, so right now, there is, there's two different opportunities, there's the PPP and there is this shuttered venues. Which we do qualify for, but they are really, really slow at releasing that information. And so unfortunately, you can't apply for both and the timing is weird. So uh we're we're keeping our eye on all of that. And then if there are future funding, we did get about three different COVID relief grants, maybe four, actually, last year. Um some to offset the cost of transitioning to um be able to uh. Deal with COVID stuff with, you know, masks and adaptations. We we had to convert a lot of our screens in the gallery to no-touch, so we did that, so there's a variety of things. Uh and then there was some funding through Arts Washington, some funding through Humanities Washington, which is how we got the Shenandoah film made. And um and then Pierce County also had some uh small grants available. So we try to leverage wherever we can and not miss an opportunity.
Good, well, thank you so much, and let's hope that we can all open up more this year in twenty twenty-one. And we can get some people down to the museum, it's such an important and vital piece of history for our community. And you're doing a great job, so thanks so much.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie, I mean, it's great that we uh we help to provide some funds for the city to make the, make it free. Because, you know, it it shouldn't be about your pocketbook to be educated. So knowing that everyone can go to the museum and get educated is is great. And you did, you did seek out, it looks like sixty thousand dollars last year in grants, so you know, it takes a lot of work, so, you know, hats off to you. Um the PowerPoint was great, if there's a way that you can provide, if you want to, to the city, we would be happy to put that. You know, on our website as a link that they could click on that.
Yeah, Josh has the PowerPoint, so you should be good to go.
Great, great, so Josh, I look forward to being able to, uh where we go to our community, where it talks about the History Museum. And you can click right to that and see that, that was a great PowerPoint, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Much better than just a report under.
That's right, I like to, you know, use pictures and fun stuff, so there's all kinds of great hidden treasures. And uh every day, we learn something new, so it's a, it's a wonderful place, thank you.
Thank you. Our second uh presentation tonight, uh thank you uh for being so patient, Dr. Jarvis, is the Peninsula School District Update. Our Superintendent, Art Jarvis, welcome.
Thank you, and and uh the presentation was fascinating, particularly uh as we talk in next few minutes. About the naming process we had for one of our schools uh in which the Shenandoah was one of those names suggested. So it it really is my pleasure to address you this evening and with me is Patrick Gillespie. Uh Patrick has, is our our director of facilities and and has been really chairing and heading the capital projects. The district, so we're gonna do a co-presentation to you tonight. But for all practical purposes, uh we're we're gonna touch on three basic civic elements. Uh of of I guess my last three years. I I joined you almost three years ago uh and had a chance to address you early in the fall. About some work that we needed to do in the school district. And uh I was planning on being here one year and now almost three years later, we can check off some landmarks. So so I'd like to start with uh really for Patrick and I to uh share with you a happening of the last few weeks. Now is the opening of Pioneer, if you can dance the slide, Josh, for us. Uh we're we're gonna talk about Pioneer Elementary School, then we're gonna move to Swiftwater and talk about the where we are. And then I'm gonna close talking a little bit about the the civic side of your superintendent search and what's next. So if I can have the next slide, Josh. Uh January nineteenth was a a a very momentous day in in many ways. Some of you have been in with the community for a long time, uh some of you are are more new as I am. But that building that opened that became Pioneer Elementary School. But that building that opened that became Pioneer Elementary School was the first school added to our school district in thirty-four years. Uh, it has been a long time. Some of you vividly remember the presentation uh three years ago as we put the plan together and we took it to the patrons for support. But we talked about the overcrowded schools, we talked about the need for more classrooms. We talked about a plan to add two new schools to the eight elementary schools that were in place. And we talked about replacing two of our oldest elementary schools. So it was uh my great pleasure to invite Katrina Knudsen to join us on February twenty-fourth for a ribbon-cutting ceremony for what is now known as Pioneer Elementary School. If you got lost in the numbering, originally that was to be school number ten of added. It was to be our second school that we would add to the system after we built school number nine through a, a fate that allowed us to buy the Boys and Girls Club and begin that school early. Uh, instead of going to bid on school number ten in the spring of twenty twenty-one, our plan was uh a couple of months from now to be out to bid on that school. Instead, we were able to do a ribbon-cutting on February twenty-fourth and say thank you. In spite of the fact that we had pandemic and we've been doing things as you have remotely and unable to gather large groups, it would have been our great pleasure to invite a broad, broad community to come in and celebrate on the twenty-fourth. Instead, we did a, a relatively modest ribbon-cutting, but wanted to say thank you to uh the many patrons. If you would advance the next slide for a minute, I'm gonna turn this next part to Patrick Gillespie to talk specifically about the, the building and some of the facts that you may be interested in in Pioneer Elementary. But it is now one of our largest elementary schools with thirty classrooms. Patrick, would you share with them what they're looking at and talk a little bit about Patrick um and Pioneer Elementary School?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, Dr. Jarvis, this is uh, this is the kind of the backside of Pioneer Elementary you're seeing in the um upper left-hand corner. Uh, what you see first and foremost is the original Boys and Girls Club building. Um, and you can see our new uh covered plate, which everybody's excited with the weather we have around here to have covered plate for our students. And then right behind it, you can kind of see the um, the addition that we added on to. And in the foreground, uh the bus, uh the bus drop-off area, where the kids will get dropped off there and then walk down to the comments. Um, we're really excited about this building. It's kind of state-of-the-art for us. We have uh flex spaces where they're outside the classrooms, where teachers can work with kids in uh various different ways. And the teachers are still figuring out how to do it. I've seen teachers collaborating in those spaces um when kids are on recess. Uh, we have uh maker spaces, which are also new to us, a little bit like an art room. Um, I, our principal Stephanie Strater calls it uh their tinkering and art teacher. So I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what all the tinkering is, but they're very excited about what they can do in that space. And some of the other great things that this school brought to our community as a whole is we have these great sports complexes that if you've ever been a parent that had to take your kids to um the turf field, it's a little hard for parking and getting to. And through this project, um, we were able to add a lot of parking which now has connectivity to the turf field, um, baseball field. Um, we're finishing up the ramp and stairs that goes down to the uh grass field and the, and the running track. So not only are we using it for school, but if you go there um at five, six o'clock at night and you see all these parents parking and they're, they're kind of social distance outside the field watching their kids play. Uh, but it's really added another element to our community of not just the school, but something that benefits everybody in the community. So we're really excited about what this school brings. You can also see our board president, uh David Olson, uh doing a ceremony ribbon-cutting on the front of the building. Uh, that was kind of a photo op. We did uh, uh another ribbon-cutting on the backside uh that we were excited to have Katrina there for. Uh, if you don't mind going to the next slide. Uh, and there, there's Katrina. So we, we really um were excited to have her there. Um, we were at very limited amount of people that we could have. And um I've just gotta kind of take a few minutes to say how much we appreciate Katrina, her department. Um, you know, Paul and, and Trent there. Uh, you know, they really walked us through a situation where we haven't built a school in a long time. Uh, the city hasn't done it, and they were great partners to, to guide us through that process and show us the ropes and uh make us understand what it is. And um one of the great things about this community is how well I think that you guys have done to make it a great community. And we're really proud of this building. We think honors that same um, uh look of the city and hopefully adds uh additional value. So we're really proud of the look of it. And Katrina and her group um been phenomenal uh throughout. So I can't say enough about her staff, and I'm missing a lot of people. So I apologize to everybody I didn't name. I just named a few. So I appreciate that. You can see down the other corner, the rest of our board members. Dr. Jarvis and uh our principal Stephanie Strater um is to the left of him by the balloons there. Um, and I know she is super proud of her building and just smiles ear to ear, and um the kids love it too. It's also, I don't know if Dr. Jarvis mentioned, it is our first steam school. Um, are you gonna touch another one? Okay, it's a steam school, so it's a science, technology. What's the E F R? Art. Well, no, it's.
Engineering.
Engineering, art and math. So uh clearly, I'm not uh, not as in tune with that as building, building. Uh, but it's, it's a, uh, um, actually, I'm gonna let Dr. Jarvis kind of touch more on that. He does a better job than me with the steam part of this.
The uh, the opportunity to build this school and be able to take some of the enrollment pressure off the entire district allowed us to look at a concept of a magnet school that would draw students from throughout the district. But in order to draw students from throughout the district, there, there needed to be a, a concept that in fact we would give parents and students some choices. So uh out of the possibilities, we created, then looked at a, a STEM school, science, technology, engineering and math. And then the, the board was very uh emphatic that the arts be included to become that steam. So it, this in a way is, is my first opportunity to invite all of you to this pioneer school that as we now have students in the school, we are occupied, we have an open. I, I would like to find ways that if you have not had a chance to, to visit, walk through and see what it means. Uh, in a steam school, there, there's no secret, there's no formula. But I would just point to, if you drive by and you see the, the light fixtures. We've met, got many comments uh on tetrahedron light fixtures. Uh, and more people now know what tetrahedron stands for by just driving by to see the, the light fixtures. But most of all, I say thank you to the entire city, all of the, the players who helped make this uh reality. We didn't just do one, we'll talk about another one in just a second. But we recognize what a, what a stress we put on the entire system. And at the same time, we needed the school so desperately that we, here we are in, at this time, able to occupy the school. It's open, it's underway, and it's an absolutely gorgeous school that will serve this district for the next fifty years. I think my last comment on each of these, as we talk about this one and then move to the next, is that we also had uh an employment situation. No, none of us planned on a pandemic. None of us planned on the shutdowns that occurred in so many parts of the life and, and our life and the difficult situation for families. You know, and I know that as we drove by these projects uh for these last uh year and a half, that we have had eighty to one hundred workers, and those are skilled workers and have good-paying jobs. And we have done a major job with these as a community of providing work within our community and within our, uh, within our system. Josh, would you switch to the next slide for me? The partner for the city of uh not just one school, but having two schools built within the city certainly is a credit to the growth management that you have provided over the years and the direction. That meant that we had a, a lot of bodies joining us within that growth management area. Uh, this school was the, the school that had been proposed previously up on, on Harbor Hills North. Uh, so I, I present to you today with a name that not very long ago would have still was gaining great familiarity as ES nine. I think it's, it's widely known as uh Elementary School Number Nine, and Swiftwater is now growing on people. But as I, as I listened to the presentation by uh Stephanie, it is uh interesting that there, there certainly is an effort in the civics of the community to recognize both the history, whether that's the Shenandoah or the history of the peoples that populated, uh, but also the, just the world that we live in and uh the Narrows. So the uh naming committee was put together of citizens and staff to bring the board five names. Those names, I think you're probably familiar with, but if you weren't, one of those was the Shenandoah. One was Harbor North, one was Beacon, one was Maritime, and one was Swiftwater. Swiftwater came out of two, really two directions, uh, and they were certainly interrelated. The uh, the English version of the, the name of the peoples that, that lived in this community. And secondly, the, the Narrows itself, the water that swiftly flows past the, our, our community. So the board in that process uh elected to name the new elementary school, Swiftwater Elementary School. Uh, and as you'll see, and it'll become familiar, it is two words in, in this case. One of the things I love about it is you won't find very many Swiftwater schools named in the United States. It's very unique to our community and uh, and our setting. Uh, the piece that we're gonna come back to after Patrick has a chance to share with you a few comments on Swiftwater is that we will, in just a very few months, in June, we will reach a, 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 hopefully a temporary occupancy in that building. And by the opening of school this fall in September, we will have added uh, in this case, school number nine. And it will, you will have both new schools complete and online. Those two schools alone, without anything to do with the other schools, have added uh over sixty new classrooms. They're both two-story elementaries, and they're drop-dead gorgeous civic additions to the, the Gig Harbor community. So Patrick, would you talk about the construction itself and where we are?
Yeah, so right now, um, as I was just thinking, as Dr. Jarvis was speaking, is that we're, we're eleven months removed from uh breaking ground on this project officially, um, right about the same time the pandemic started. So we've got a great contractor who's been pushing the job forward. And uh, like Dr. Jarvis said, we're looking for TCO and uh sometime in June. Um, we're excited about that is because we're redistricting to bring kids to the school. And I think it's gonna be important for those families to know where their kids are gonna go and that they're going to have a school for their kids to go to. So that's why we um have that date a little earlier than the other ones, is to try and uh give that community the reassurance that, that they're gonna be ready for the first day of school. Um, if you've driven by on Harbor Hill Drive, you can see it's uh really starting to look a lot like the rendering in front of you. Um, but way more uh amazing-looking than our rendering can ever do. And uh just a phenomenal brick and the metal, um, it, it, it fits really well into the area, I think. Um, it's got a huge play, playground field um that we've set up to have a, you know, be able to use for like a seventy-seven soccer field, which is services you, a lot of the younger use. A small uh baseball field. Um, and it's, it is a two-story building, so all of our new schools are two-story. Um, and some of that makes them great. You can see the big windows kind of above the name and the rendering. That's the library, which will have great views to go right out over the playfield. And um, you know, it's, it's just a great surrounding uh with all the homes up there. You know, it is the first school that could be a walk-to-school. Um, so you could have students walking on the sidewalks going there, the connectivity to the Y and the, the future um athletic fields down the road. Um, it's really becoming a really exciting area there. So, so we're excited to see what happens down the road as, as other things get built up uh and uh to help take the pressure off of the student.
I would, I would uh come back to, as we open in the fall of twenty twenty-one, uh a sincere thank you again to Katrina, her entire staff. But really beyond that, the, this design review board, all of you have been part of this uh because this is a terrific civic addition to the community. It was uh carefully, from literally before day one, carefully uh orchestrated to, to take into consideration the, the codes and the plans and the, the intent of the city of Gig Harbor and, and do it well. And at the same time, do it in a timeframe that serves the needs of kids and families and be able to uh, to give the community a product that would be a point of pride for fifty years. And, and uh I, I truly think that this is, is one of those that, that you will see. It will stand out for a long, long time. But it's also a tribute to the, just the technical work that was done by everybody who served on the design review. Everybody that served on the, the various planning pieces, working out the specs. And, and what you've finished with is this uh beautiful, beautiful school that not only will be functional, but it will be so representative of Big Harbor, in my opinion. And, and I say a deep thank you to everybody for that. So with the fall of twenty-one, if you reflect back for just a minute to February of two thousand nineteen, uh, you realize that in February nineteen, we were counting those ballots with our uh, holding our breath, given the, some of the history. And of course, it, it passed, and here we are at, adding. As you know, there really are also two other schools that happen to be out in Pierce County, so I won't spend as much time talking about those. But uh, two within the city and two within the, the county. But the two within the county replaced two of our oldest schools. Collectively, those schools, uh those new schools and the addition of classrooms have increased our elementary capacity by over fifty percent uh for, and taking kids out of portable. So if you think back to my droning on with you two years ago in February, much of it dealt with a number of portables and where kids were and uh what was needed. And now we're, we are delivering that uh on time and on budget, as they say. What a, what a treat to be able to say that. So we're gonna certainly on these two schools, Pioneer and Swiftwater, give you a chance to ask questions. Patrick and I will try to answer them. But before I, I finish on just the two projects, there's another milestone that's coming up. Would you switch to the next slide for me, Josh? Uh, and I'm gonna turn this one back to Patrick to talk just a, a little bit about the construction side. And you're seeing a pretty current look at the insides. Patrick?
Yeah, this uh, these photos were taken uh just a couple of weeks ago. So we took our board through the building, kind of give them an update where we are. This is the backside, the north side of the building, uh where we'll have the bus loop. So we try to keep the bus separated from the cars. The buses will look through here, the kids will be dropped off under that canopy. And we try to make sure that the back and the front both have that great feel. And so, so when kids come to school, that no matter where they come in, either side of the building, they're really getting that great feel of their school, getting ready for the day. Um, to the right, um, is the, uh, again, we have our board president, David Olson. Then to the right of him is uh the principal, David Brooks, who was also the principal of Discovery before he was named principal of Swiftwater. Where he's standing right now is his maker space, um, which you can see the big opening behind him. That'll be a garage door that opens up to a flex space that he's sort of standing in. And then on the other side is another garage door that opens to the uh library. So it creates this connectivity from the library to the flex space, to the maker space. And so our buildings are really designed to be more flexible, where you have a, a traditional classroom, but you can change it up and use them in different ways um versus what we have in our current building. Um, versus what we have in our current building. So I know David's very excited about uh this feature in particular. All of our schools have something a little different, but this is one that's unique to Swiftwater. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the entry. You can see the main staircase going upstairs and uh around the corner, there's uh underneath it, some stairs where kids can kind of hang out and read books, eat lunch. Uh, you can see the commons with all the lifts in there and the gym beyond it. And then the music stage would be around the corner. Um, and then just another space within the building that's uh very flexible. It can be used for any number of things. Um, is to the right, you can see the ceiling tile grids going in, HVACs in. Uh, they're getting close. Uh, you know, we've got tile going in. There are a lot of exciting things. We're, we're kind of on the home stretch. You know, like you said, we're eleven months in and about three months to go from where we're hoping to uh ask for TCO. So we're excited about where we're at in the project right now.
So an invitation to you would be that uh the space you're looking at is known as the community room. Uh, it will become useful for many purposes, but if in fact at some point you need or you want an opportunity to hold a city council meeting uh outside of your own uh building, we would certainly invite you to join us in the community room and uh, and look at the, really the, the ability to serve a, a community with space that's not just for those kids, but also is for the broader communities. So uh, welcome to the, the community room. Next, next slide, please. Uh, we're gonna, as I say, we'll come back and answer questions, try to uh give you more detail. But the third piece I, I wanted to share with you was that there's another civic piece that's taking place. And that is that uh yours truly is, is I get to be down to my last few months of what started in uh two thousand eighteen to be one year, and I'm still with you. And uh, at this point, on March thirteenth, uh, the board will be interviewing five candidates. They've already closed the applications. They have the, I, list narrowed. It will be advertised on uh Wednesday. Sharon, who those candidates are. They'll be interviewing on Saturday. At the end of Saturday, they will try to narrow that down to three finalists. Each of the finalists will have a full day on the sixteenth, the seventeenth, and the eighteenth of March. And by March nineteenth, the board intends to name the superintendent. And uh at the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, do the final approval of the contract and the employment of your new superintendent. So we have been conversing and, and thinking in terms of this is the person that we hope will be with you for the next decade uh in the, the community. I, I said I would apply for the job myself in this beautiful community if I thought I had another decade in me, but at this, the end of my thirty-third year as superintendent and my fifty-sixth year in the education business, I, it's probably not good for me to talk in terms of a decade that you so desperately uh need and want, and you want that leadership. So it's a very, very exciting time for the school board. It's this exciting time for the community. And I share with uh the council very proudly that this, this has been a step uh that the piece I would tie in is certainly part of the work that's, you've been looking at these last few slides between uh Swiftwater Elementary and Pioneer Elementary has been to try to get those projects finished and in a good place so that we could hand that to a new superintendent who comes in and says, now we get to build the, the next step and all the things we want to do for the kids, the program and, and for the community. So on, on that note, I think we would move the next slide is just an offer to you uh to questions and answers if you have interest. And also, I've been around long enough to know when there aren't a lot of questions, it's a good sign to just stop talking and move on and let you get to the work that's in front of you this evening. So thank you so much for letting me have another opportunity with you. I don't know how many more I will have in these next uh few months, but you have been a wonderful, wonderful agency to partner with. My deepest appreciation for that. And I offer uh Patrick to handle any of the tough questions. I get the easy ones and, and uh, and we get to say thank you. So Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, you have done a great, great job for this school district and it will show for decades and decades. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Jarvis. Um, we're honored that you, you were so dedicated to the three years that could have been one. And we really needed it for our community. So uh, we really do it. And we were thrilled with the name that you chose of Swiftwater. So thank you so much for all that you've done for our community.
You are welcome.
Presentation.
Thank you.
Council member Woo.
I walk up in Gig Harbor North by the Y and by that new school several times a week, and it has been exciting and a joy to see this school rise out of the dirt and rise out of the ground. It's just been wonderful. And so what a good thing for our kids. And it's really nice to hear you compliment our planning department and our staff here because we do have the best staff. And uh, thank you for this presentation and, and for all you've done for our kids here in, in Gig Harbor. Good job. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, and uh, the presentations were very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll say goodnight. We'll, we'll actually sign off and let you get on with your business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Okay, so with that, we have a mayor's report. I'd like to acknowledge that um Friday was Employee Appreciation Day last week. And on Thursday, on the fourth, we did a proclamation from the council and myself to our employees of their dedication. And we actually read it to the employees twice on Thursday. So I just want to acknowledge uh all the hard work that our employees are doing. So thank you. The second item is um, I would like to take a moment to celebrate today's holiday, International Women's Day. Every year on March eighth, the holiday encourages people to actively choose to celebrate women's achievements, raise awareness about women's equality, lobby for accelerated gender parity and fundraise for female-focused charities. Many people might not know this, but this has been a holiday since the early nineteen hundreds. In nineteen oh eight, women in New York began organizing for greater equality, better working conditions, and voting rights. The first National Women's Day was celebrated in nineteen oh nine. And Women's Day, and Women's Days were celebrated in countries across the world. In two thousand and one, the internet provided the place to bring all of the celeb- celebrations together. This year's theme is to choose to challenge, which calls on us all to promote gender equality and celebrate women's achievements. I'll start with this and encourage you to think about what you could choose to do. I choose to recognize the women around me and champion an equal representation here at the city. I'd like to take a moment to recognize a three-city council out of seven that are women. Tracy Markley, Ginny Woo, and Robin Denson. I'd also like to recognize that nearly fifty percent of our department heads and senior staff are women as well. Today and every day, we celebrate the achievements and the contributions of women have made here in the city of Gig Harbor. Thank you. The third item, uh, every so often, we experience the loss of some, of us, some significant members of our community. Though we are not always able to recognize them, I did want to mention the passing tonight of James Tomlin. Jim passed away in his peace, in peacefulness in his home, February twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at the age of eighty-nine. He was born in Deerwood, Minnesota, but moved to Olalla where he raised, where he was raised from the age of two. Now Jim was so proud of his association with Tom Morris Senior at Purdy Realty and their partnership, which lasted fifty-plus years in creating Tom O'Keefe, which he was CEO until his illness. Now, many of you have, that have been here for a long time do realize that Tom's, Tom Morris Senior, he, he started a charity that actually went up until just a couple of years ago with giving money to the community. So Jim, I'm sure was a lot, a big part of all this. Now Jim Tomlin, he actually began his career in real estate at age sixteen, when he purchased his first twenty-acre piece of property. And he had a neighbor co-sign for him to buy a chainsaw. I might mention, I called Jim four years ago and his mom said he was out working a chainsaw in the tree. Now it's just four years ago. He went on to begin his career in logging and property development and building commercial properties and countless residential home developments. His final project was Moses Point Golf Course at Moses Lake. In his spare time, he enjoyed restoring classic cars, bowling, hunting, gardening, playing blackjack, quoting his two dogs, Suzie and Gidget, and most of all, having a big piece of prime rib. Jim was a very generous man in many ways, including gifting of a nineteen twenty-four Porter steam engine to the Elbe Mountain, Mount Rainier Scenic Railroad that still runs from Elbe to Mineral. Jim and his wife Diane married in New Year's Eve nineteen seventy. He always kidded her by saying that he needed a tax deduction. They celebrated their golden anniversary this year on twenty twenty, New Year's Eve. So Jim spent eight years in the National Guard, was a lifetime member of LeMay Museum, and a classic car club, and a longtime member of the Gig Harbor Eagles. Prior to being mayor, I knew Jim while I was having my jewelry store here in Gig Harbor, working on various requests he had. I had a lot of respect for him and he was an honest, sincere man. He will be missed and he adds a lot to our community. A lot of this I took from their obituary and I asked his, his wife if she would be okay with me reading this tonight. In lieu of any flowers, please consider any contributions to St. Anthony's Hospital or the Gig Harbor Eagles. If you do still want to send flowers, either do so to the family or plant a d- tree in Jim's name. Thank you. Um, earlier today, I sent a proclamation to all the council of what we're going to do next on the twenty-second is we're going to read a welcoming proclamation. Um, changed a little bit just to recognize our Native Americans a little bit more. And instead of having it from some of our council members, I didn't want to throw everyone. If you would raise your hands for who would like to be added to the welcoming proclamation. Okay, council member Woo. Uh, Abersole, Markley, uh, Denson. Okay, so I have Abersole, Woo, Markley, Denson, anyone else that wants it to be on it? Okay. With that, that concludes the mayor's report. And now we will listen to our city administrator report, uh Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is uh an update about the employee engagement survey. Our labor attorney has obtained and reviewed proposals. She's in the process of preparing a report, including a recommendation to the city council to hire a consultant. It's her intention to present the report and a contract for consideration at the March twenty-two regular city council meeting. Should council approve the contract, we will promptly begin discussions with the consultant to begin its work, including developing an action plan to address areas of concern identified in the survey results and aid us in our efforts to improve employee satisfaction. I also sent an email to all employees on Friday about this. It was in response to an inquiry from one of the employees who had sent it citywide. So I took the liberty of uh reaching out to the employees as well. I conclude my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Francis.
Yeah, well, we uh be discussing uh when will we be discussing the merits of each of these firms?
It'll be a recommendation from the city attorney on, on one particular consultant. She's already vetted those at the council's request. And she's bringing back the report on March twenty-second.
Okay, and we have our staff report. Uh, Harborview Stinson, sanitary sewer, public works director, Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm going to bring up a picture here on the screen in a second of the area we're talking about. It's right at the intersection of Harborview Stinson, but just wanted to give you a quick summary. So a- as the designers has been, have been proceeding with the intersection improvement design at the intersection of Harborview and Stinson. Uh, our wastewater operations team has been noticing uh some sewer flow issues uh in the manholes in and around the uh intersection. I'm going to show you those here now. Um, this is something that uh as part of utility locates and everything else, we routinely go out into the area. And I apologize, it's a small uh picture. It's a lot on this picture and I'll zoom in here in a second, but this is the area we're talking about. If you can orient yourself. North is to the left and here is Ed Bo Park. So um, and it's kind of hard to see, but I'll, and I'll zoom in now just a little bit. Right here is a manhole and there's SS is sanitary sewer, the sanitary sewer line. And here's another manhole over here. Uh, this section of sanitary sewer line has been found to have what we call a belly in it, a low spot. It's an eighteen-inch diameter pipe, um, concrete pipe. And it is uh in the middle of the pipe uh for quite a long section, actually. Uh, the soil that supports the pipe has settled. And uh therefore it's not flowing uh at a consistent slope to allow sewer to flow by gravity from one manhole to the next. Uh, by having a, a belly or a low spot in the pipe and this, like I said, it's an eighteen-inch sewer pipe. Uh, the, the sewer main has sagged about half the diameter, about nine inches. And so uh sewer routinely collects in that area. Uh, that allows sediment and grit within the sewer flows to settle out and it significantly reduces capacity of the pipe. Now, if this sewer uh main was set to its proper grade, which is a consistent slope of about, I think, point two percent is what it should have been. Um, is, I'm sorry, two percent. Uh, then it should be flowing uh it with plenty of capacity and uh no issues would be here. We've always modeled it as if it was flowing uh or with a consistent slope, not with a belly in it. Uh, but because we have recently found in February that there is a belly in this, we've been looking at options um to, of how we're going to do and, and how immediate this is to address. And uh, we have come to the conclusion that we need to address this issue now. Um, we cannot wait. We do not recommend waiting at least until after the uh intersection improvements are complete because while we do have capacity, as long as we continue to jet the pipe and keep it clean, um, there is going to be a point soon where we won't have the capacity because of that belly in the pipe. And we will have to come back in the next year, few years and rip up the intersection and do this work again. So um, if you are able to see some of these, you uh information that this is something George Flanagan prepared for us, by the way. He's put in rim elevations, inverted elevations. You'll notice that at the manholes, uh, we're, we're ten feet deep. In the middle of this area over here, we're about nineteen feet deep. Uh, so it's an extremely deep sewer uh that is probably the invert. That pipe's probably a, almost um approaching the top of sea, sea level there. Two options we have. Uh, the, the first one is to just remove and replace the existing sewer main, which is again, I'm going to try and use my cursor to show it sanitary sewer through here. Um, we could do that. That would cost a significant amount of money to do temporary bypass. We'd have to put up a temporary pump and uh replace this sewer um with the road closed because it is so deep, we have to close the road to do that work. And then we're also going to be having conflicts with a significant number of utilities. It's kind of hard to see, but there's a G right here. That's natural gas. That's a high-pressure gas line. I think it's a four-inch gas line that feeds uh the southern part of the Gig Harbor Peninsula. Um, and so we have to, that would be very difficult to work. And you can see it goes right, the gas line goes right over the top of the sewer line in this whole section. So that would be, we have to shut down the roadway, relocate the gas, and then go ahead and reload, remove the existing sewer main and then install a new sewer main. As you can imagine, that would be very costly. As you can imagine, that would be very costly and very time consuming to do. The other alternative, uh, which is the option that uh staff is going down the path with right now and we're recommending. Is to build a new bypass sewer line on the water side of the right of way. Uh, that is in um, what you see is in the green line, the red is just distances that George was taking. That uh new sewer line, while it would allow this old sewer line to remain online. Uh, through the duration of construction, there's a benefit there. You wouldn't have to do necessarily temporary bypass. And the roadway would be able to be open for a longer period of time. It's, it requires uh new manholes. There's a new manhole upstream and a new manhole downstream. Uh, that work, of course, is going to require some very large equipment to get in there in the middle of the roadway, put in some very deep holes. Um, this is, uh, any way you look at it, it's going to cause uh some some disruptions to traffic. Uh, there's probably gonna be, if not overnight, at least long. Uh, durations where the roadway is gonna be closed to do this work regardless of which option we do. Um, and so what we're proposing in the direction we're going right now with our designers. We're we're getting a, our designer uh to provide us a contract amendment to have a subconsultant on board to do this uh design work. Again, we're recommending and proceeding right now with this new bypass sewer line um on the water side. One of the downfalls to doing it on this is that we get out of the right of way. Um, and then we have different permitting requirements. Now, we're in the shoreline regardless and so shoreline permitting is the same. Um, but we are then on the park property. Uh, now we have to rip up all of this sidewalk here. We have to be cautious of that. We also have to be cautious of this. There's that very large fir tree right here. We ca- we I, we've already had this discussion. You see George put a dimension on there. It's about twenty-five feet away. That's about the sub, mention the drip line. And we're gonna be down in that area of the route. So um, we're trying to look at other alternatives, but we also have overhead power and overhead utilities here. And we've got power poles here and it's very uh dangerous to get too close to those power lines without them being. Uh, held back in some way, shape or form when we're making a massive excavation next to those power lines. So we're taking all this into account. We're going to probably be coming back to council very soon with consultant contract amendment. To have a consultant's uh subconsultant come onboard and do this sewer line relocation. Because we're recommending that we do this now instead of later. Um, and get it in the permitting pipeline as soon as possible. We've already been connect communicating with uh community development. They've been very helpful in telling us all the permits that they think we need and will help us guide through their, through the path. Of course, as every council member knows, community development is already slammed with projects and short staff. So it's going to, um, th- they're responding uh in the priority and emergency that this is. Um, so that we can get this work done. But it's it's not going to be, uh, the project's not gonna be completed in the same timeframe that we originally thought. Uh, the, we're going to um, to defer at least a month to get through this added design. Uh, project. What we're, the way we're structuring this change is we are uh going to be. Adding this work to the intersection project. So the same contractor would bid on both parts, the sewer relocation and the. And the intersection improvements themselves. Uh, but we can have different bid schedules. We do have sufficient funds in the wastewater operating to take care of this issue. It wasn't budgeted, but there is funds in this sewer operating uh fund to pay for this. Um, we don't have a solid estimate yet, but we know it's gonna be quite a bit of money just because of its depth and location. Uh, but we're going to be proposing to add this design for the sewer to the intersection project. We're gonna be then, we would be pushing out the bid opening date and uh accommodating for the design. That's gonna uh probably take us another month of just work on the sewer to get the sewer. Uh, line installed. So that's uh over two months right there, one for the added design, two for the added sewer work. Um, and what that means is, again, we were hoping to have this project. Uh, intersection project under construction and its first lift of pavement down before we got into fall. I don't see how that's going to happen. That also has a domino effect on the certificate of occupancy for the. Uh, Endboat Brickhouse Building because that uh that project, uh, the Endboat Brickhouse Building. Relies upon the new added parking required for, that's gonna be created as part of the intersection project. So there's a lot of uh things in play here that are going to be pushed out. Uh, right now, worst case scenario, we're, we're saying that um. All of the sewer and other utility related work would be completed in twenty twenty-one. And then it would have to be patched up temporarily for the winter to let winter uh weather go through. And then we would re-engage with the contractor, suspend the work and re-engage the contractor in spring of twenty twenty-two as soon as the weather breaks. And then complete the intersection work, but it would all be done under one contract. So I'm sorry for all this bad news, um, but it, we don't feel like we should wait and come back to this after the intersection is built. Because it would probably demolish quite a bit of the work that we do as part of the intersection improvements. I know there's probably a lot of questions, uh, not to mention frustration, but I'd be happy to answer what I can at this point. Councilman Luke.
Uh, yes, is there any chance of undergrounding any utilities while we're digging this big hole?
Any chance to underground utilities? You're talking about the the drive to the power cable, all those utilities. Um, first of all, that would take a lot more time to do because we would have to notify them. And we would have to let them do their design and then let them do their construction at the same time. So. Um, but then that gets into who pays for that. We, it is possible. Uh, but we have to look at the franchise agreement that uh talks about when utilities are required to be undergrounded. And when they're just required to be relocated. Um, just because we have a utility relocated doesn't mean it has to go back underground. We might have to, as the city, have to pay for some of that.
And what else happens on the rest of Stinson from uh Stinson Harborview all the way up to Grandview?
Uh, what you mean as far as the sewer issue?
Well, as far as the other um construction that was expected on Stinson this year.
That's.
The roundabout at Rosedale.
That that's on your, that's on your new business agenda tonight for award? That's not affected by this?
Thank you.
Yes, council member Abersole.
Yeah, I guess I got two questions for you, Jeff. First one, uh, you described a a belly effect in this pipe. Um, is this a warping that has happened? Is it something that's taken in place over time? I guess that leads into my second question. How old are these pipes in? Is there any kind of warranty or manufacturer's coverage that uh could apply to it?
Well, I'll start with answering the question of how are these pipes? This, these are concrete pipes that were installed when the sewer was first installed throughout the city in nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five. So um, they're approaching fifty years old. Um, and is there a warranty? No, this, this was just, uh, this is something that has progressed slowly over time. But it seems to have accelerated recently because we haven't seen the 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 issue in the, in the uh low spot of the. Of this section of sewer main, as bad as we have seen it uh recently. We, when uh, you may have seen Daryl and a crew contractor out there in the middle of the roadway. Uh, or mid-February, um, they were, they had to get a special TV or our camera equipment. Well, won't work underwater. It will be able to see things underwater. So they had to give a special equipment in there to be able to see things underwater and have a taller camera. So they are, they were able to get that completed and uh, but no, it was something where they didn't have. They didn't see this in, this bat of a belly until recently. So and it's likely due just to settling of the roadway. And and any other settling that occurs underground. Again, it's nineteen feet deep, so. Uh, and it's, it could be, when it was constructed, it could have been some, unfortunately, some soft uh soil. Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, uh, this is uh troubling in, in so many different ways. I had no idea. Um, I I've got a lot of questions. I won't take up a lot of time. You're not looking for any action tonight.
No, I'm just giving you an update to let you know what's happening and that you're gonna be seeing consultant services contract amendment to do this work. And uh, there's gonna be delays in the CIP schedule because of this. And yeah, and again, if, 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 if council is uh, is, though I have to say, if council. Is wanting to just uh ignore the sewer issue right now and proceed without doing it and then come back in a couple of years and address the sewer issue after the intersection improvements. Uh, I would need to know that now.
Yeah, well, I, I. I, I don't particularly have, I, I have so many questions that um, and due to the length of all these presentations. I won't take up any more time today on this, but uh definitely you can expect a phone call from me tomorrow.
Okay, well, I, I'd be happy to take your phone call, but honestly, it'd probably be best to talk to Trent Ward. I mean, this is a project that he is leading. Yeah, I'll just be the middle man on that one.
All right. Might add that, um, you know, Bob and myself, that with Jeff, we wanted to keep you informed. We thought instead of trying to fix something like this, um, and have the road closed so long. It's better to bypass it and make it new. And um, it's probably gonna be the same. It might be less cost and it's less disruption. Uh, and you don't know what else you're gonna create by doing so. You can leave it until you tie into each end of it.
Yeah, I, I follow it from the mayor's comments. Yeah, it, it, it's not likely, our, our proposed alternative in the green. Is likely going to be the less costly, uh, and that is even without all the risk of uh removing and relocating the sewer. As I described in option one, there's a lot of risk in there. There are a lot of unknowns and costs that we would uh could incur. And so it, because of the temporary bypass and and everything and the risks involved, that's where we continue to recommend that we. Follow the green line or close to the green line on, at least on the water side of Harborview Drive. Uh, council member Hines.
Uh, yeah, two questions. Uh, one, looking at your, your diagram there, your, your drawing there. This, this bowed section goes from, from where to where, to, to where the. Section ties in all the way down to uh where it disappears down here. I assume it rejoins the existing line down here at the bottom.
Yeah, if you can see my, if you can see my cursor, I'm sorry, George's comments there. There's, there's a, there's a manhole right here. This, the sanitary sewer line coming down Stinson comes into a manhole here. And that's the joint where it joins the Harborview uh side of the sanitary sewer. They join and then they continue here. And so it bows not long after you get out of this man, this is sanitary sewer manhole uh three dash twenty-eight, I believe. And this is three dash twenty-six. So it bows not too far out of here and then it drops and then it comes back up. So. It's.
We, but we've confirmed that that bowing is, is spread out over a large area. Or a li- a large linear.
Yes, it's, it's over a, a, a long distance of the, of the um. Of the gravity sewer. It's not just, it's not just a few sections of pipe have settled right here. It's a significant section of pipe.
Okay, now so that, that precludes a uh, a spot fix.
Exactly, yeah. Otherwise, if, I mean, if it was just a few, you know, a hundred feet or two hundred feet or something, you know, we could probably just. Come in and uh dig up that section and reset it. But um, it, it, it's, it's a much larger section of that area.
You, you, you also mentioned that, that the upper section of the, the Stinson work. Including the Rosedale Roundabout not be affected timing wise on this. Um, I'm sitting here looking and saying, is this gonna be down for a while? Because I, I look at the, the map and I said, hey, Stinson's the only way around. If you start monkeying with the uh, with, with the, the roadway on Harborview. Uh, it's obviously gonna put a premium on Stinson. Uh, that is as a way to get around it. For example, go up to Rosedale, go down Rosedale and get back on Harborview, okay? Um, I'm struggling with that. Help, help me out here.
I, I, I would ask you to uh hold that question and that, that request until I get to new business number two. Because I'm gonna explain the construction schedule for Rosedale Stinson and the Stinson overlay as part of that award, contract award.
Okay, I can stand the suspense. Got it.
Uh, council member Markley.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Jeff, for uh bringing this to our attention. It's not easy to be the bearer of bad news. I definitely wouldn't support waiting and re-digging up a, a brand new construction project and doing that work all over again. So while this is disappointing, of course, um, I, I would be supportive of trying to get this done as fast as we can. And not uh, not start this roundabout project until after this is complete. I just don't see the point in wasting money that way. So supportive of, of waiting for the, until this is done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Franch.
Yeah, wh- when did this uh come to your attention?
Uh, February last month. Uh, I, if you needed a specific data, I have to go back and look at an email. It was right after they did a uh TV-ing of the uh ins- video inspection of the line. And I forget what day in February they were out there, but it was mid, mid, early to mid-February.
Well, and, and that, that is when they noticed the uh settling, the, the water not uh having the right pitch to it?
Yeah, the grade, the pipe not having the right grade to it. And, and it wa- it had been known for uh since uh probably. A year and a half that, that this, this section of pipe um had, wasn't sloped properly. And, and they had been jetting it and cleaning it, but it has gotten a lot worse, is my understanding, in the past six, uh, four to six months or something. Because it uh, it started to be very restrictive in its flow. And so something changed, something happened in it. Uh, and so it was something where, yeah, we could put that on a capital project that's, you know, ten, fifteen years out. And start thinking about it or do other uh alignment changes just for, for, for minimal flow improvements. Or, or minimal design changes for minimal phone improvements. But it got to a point and it's a deep enough valley where it's not, that's, those solutions are no longer viable.
As you know, our, our camera, we have a camera to go through the pipes, but that camera doesn't really go underwater. And so we actually had to rent or contract someone to take a camera that goes underwater in these pipes to figure it out.
Yeah, um, so is this, is this bypass option, you've come to just. Do you believe there's gonna be a lot of cost savings because the gas pipe is running above it?
We believe there's gonna be a lot of cost savings with this permanent bypass uh because of the utility conflicts. That exists if we do remove and replace and because of the temporary bypass pump. If we do remove and replace, we've gotta pay for an entire temporary bypass pumping system during construction. So picture a whole different set of um pumps brought in for, you know, three, four weeks. Just to allow the sewer to bypass during that time. Now, that, I, one thing I didn't mention, but I, some of you probably know. This sewer line flows about half the sewer in the city. It takes all of the sewer from Lift Station Four and more. And so it's, it, you, you can't not have the sewer line. And so the, the, the cost to do the temporary bypassing would be substantial.
Yeah.
Also thought, you know, you're, you're putting um, this, the soil's already failed there. So putting, putting a new pipe on, on uh soil that you have to fix under the pipe. Instead of starting to a new place and leaving that flowing until you're ready to put, until you're ready to tap it at the last minute. Uh, which is a lot less interruption on the street too.
And well, in order to get, i- in order to get the uh contractor in and working on this. If we were to do just remove and replace, um, it's likely that this entire section of Harborview would have to be shut down for that entire. Construction project. Over here, we can shut down a lane. And if you recall, in this section of Harborview, we've got the beginning of tapered. Uh, turn lane coming in to this intersection. So there's more alternatives to ease traffic congestion during construction. If we do it on the water side. But again, that causes us permitting issues. Because now we've gotta go through and get certain permits because we're working on private, we're working on a, a p- a proper piece of property and not randomly.
Oh, yeah, I, I, the, you know, the, I, I, I'm not gonna probably be too happy when, I, I mean, it's something we have to address. There's no question about that. The, the cost involved here is, is gonna be mind blowing and really. You know, the cost is the most important thing, but man, if we lose that tree, that is really gonna change. That's gonna be a, a bad deal. That tree is a very prominent part of that park.
Yeah, it, it definitely is. And I know this was the first iteration that Georgia, and this is without having conversations with uh, uh, design. Consultants or anything, um, we're going to, we've already talked that we're going to. uh design consultant or anything, um, we're going to, we've already talked that we're going to increase that spacing from that tree to uh further protect that tree, even if that means having to anchor back pen light poles. We're going to have to do that because I've already said that tree, we need to stay it further away from that tree to keep it.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Abersole.
Yes, Jeff, um, thank you. So with this pipe sinking, um, is there any opportunities for a sinkhole development to take place or any kind of um ground collapse that maybe we need to mark off or keep the public aware of?
Well, we don't um have, first of all, I I don't know for sure. Uh, what there's, I won't know. But the likelihood based on uh historic uh geology through here is is that we don't have those types of issues in this area. What we do have, and for those of you who might remember, well, who have seen pictures, there used to be a creek that ran down here. And it used to discharge right about where the outfall is, right here in the cove. And so my my guess is that this was all just fill placed in here a hundred years ago or so. And or or even less, maybe eighty years ago. And uh, the road was built on top of fill and it has just slowly settled over time, though maybe because of the amount of rain we've been having and other factors, that it has settled more significantly recently. But sinkhole, I I don't think so, just based on the geology we have for here. But I I'm not a geologist.
I'm sorry, is there a, is there a cavity then in the ground?
Um, no, it's just slow settling of everything. I mean, if you think nine inches, um, it it would be nine inches, that's eighteen, nineteen feet down. Um, that's not going to relate necessarily directly to nine inches of the surface. It could bridge a few other places, but um, it's i- i- it would be hard to see um uh even uh settlement of the roadway itself if it was fairly consistent of just a few inches across this large of an area. You're not going to see large cracks develop uh or anything like that.
I might add, there's there's springs all over. I I I know so many springs right around here. And as everyone caps a spring or caps water or develops parcel, that water's still there. It's just going to find another place to go. Councilmember Heinz.
Well, yes, I I guess along that same line, uh, are are we, are we confident that when we put the new line in and it's running through the same general area that it's not going to sag again? Is there anything that that can be done? Or are we confident that getting it off the roadway will be sufficient to avoid settling again of that line? The same thing happening?
Well, no, knowing what we know now, we're going to approach it with some construction practices that will drastically reduce any likelihood of settlement. Um, also bring it outside of the right of way. We don't have the pressure from the roadway itself on top of it. Um, but yes, it, if you were to look at it, let's just say, let's bring us back to nineteen seventy four when this was constructed. Um, I I don't have the construction drawings in front of me, but I can guarantee you the road or the bed of the pipe, the bedding of the pipe that was completed in seventy four is going to be much um lower in strength in terms of capacity than what our section is going to be for the bedding of the pipe. And knowing that we do have settlement in this area, it will um in- increase the uh depth of the section and probably the materials that we're you that are, we will be using to support the pipe to stop any further settlement down that bow in the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions. Um, you know, you'll see more to come and uh appreciate your understanding in this issue.
Thank you, Jeff. And I believe you you already touched on our our, your second item.
Uh, yes, yeah, you already gave that one now, so.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, I I know our meeting is already going long, but may I request a five minute recess, please?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping someone would.
Thank you.
Let's make it, um, you know, I don't know, eight minutes or so, just give yourself a little time. Okay, Josh, stop the request. Great, we're continuing on with the Gig Harbor City Council meeting on Monday, March eighth. And we're going on to public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, Bob, do we have any items that are any public comment that were written on items that were not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, council, I do have one. It was submitted this afternoon. It's regarding the sidewalks on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. It's from uh Tyler Raymond. He's a family physician here in town. He writes, hello, everyone. I'm a resident of fifty seven sixteen fortieth Avenue Court Northwest, and I urge you to please expedite placing sidewalks along Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Hunt Street to Fiftieth Street Court, ideally to Goodman Middle School. I walk, run, ride or bike along this road nearly daily for exercise and shopping. This is a very serious public health and safety issue, and there are funding opportunities at the federal level that our community could use. I also feel strongly that the city continues to push efforts in new areas of construction such as Borgan Boulevard developments rather than taking care of and maintaining more established areas and people of the community. From a public health standpoint, this has great impact for our families and youth. With the future operating of the market in Olympic Village, the sidewalk would help families walk to healthy shopping, parks and the library. And this would improve the health of our community and bring in revenue for our community. From a safety standpoint, I have seen dogs, strollers and children in the street on a very heavily trafficked, trafficked road with speeding vehicles. Though I am thankful for the new speed limit signs, they are not enough. It is only a matter of time before a serious accident or fatality occurs. Potential for a lawsuit to cost more than this project would cost. For the safety and health of our community, I strongly encourage the city to fund this project. Please make your current residents just as much of a priority as attracting new residents and expanding the city. Thank you, Tyler Raymond, family physician. There, that concludes the uh comments received in writing on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you. I, now we will see if anyone from the public, uh, there is one attending. Now, this would be on non-agenda items, something that's not on the agenda. And you will have three minutes and please say your name and address. So now I will open up the public comment to people, which is already open, but this will be the people that have phoned in or are listening. A caller twelve five three, go ahead. And Molly, will you put a clock on it or something?
Yes.
Thank you. A caller uh eight seven four, you're able to talk.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Yes, um, my name's Thomas Wick and my address is Hunt Street Northwest in Gig Harbor, zip code nine eight three three four. And I wanted to bring a couple of concerns to, and I wanted to start by thanking the council and the mayor for um allowing a citizen to speak this evening. Um, so I'm, I want to talk about resolution twelve hundred. Um, I provided public comment um at a recent um committee meeting, and I was told to bring this issue before the council this evening. But the concern is, um, and Mayor Kuhn, you signed this document, and the specific concern I have here is it says properties along Burnham Drive and within the North Creek watershed have experienced substantial development over the last ten years. This parcel is at significant risk of development. And it talks about a housing development would almost certainly mean the further degradation of this uniquely healthy salmon habitat, the loss of a great number of trees and a dramatic change in the look of this corner of our downtown view basin. The concern I have with that is, um, and I wanted to correct you, is that um, given the Endangered Species Act and given state law and environmental restrictions, the city of Gig Harbor cannot permit a housing development on that property that would degrade this uniquely healthy salmon habitat. So, and why is Gig Harbor telling the citizens and that the only way to preserve a uniquely healthy salmon habitat is for the city to acquire it? That's the concern. That's on one side of the of town, and now we go to my side of the town. Um, over here on the Hunt Scancy Drainage Area where we are act, our properties are actually also um designated um salmon fish protection areas. And so that's the concern I have tonight is um Gig Harbor refused twice. We offered my neighbor and I ten thousand dollars, a total of twenty thousand dollars to pay for Gig Harbor to do a comprehensive drainage evaluation that would have verified that the streams coming out of the Scancy Avenue Drainage were salmon fish waters and they had forest practice protections. And it would have verified that the stream flowed across our properties also had those protections. But the city of Gig Harbor refused to even acknowledge these offers. So the concern I have is why, and I asked the citizens to ask this question. Why would the city refuse a no cost opportunity to learn what the drainage conditions are downstream from a Gig Harbor development onto Pierce County property? And again, this was twice that my father-in-law, father-in-law offered to pay ten thousand dollars to pay for this drainage evaluation, but we just needed Gig Harbor to acknowledge it, sanction it and to heed the results from that drainage evaluation, and they absolutely refused. And what complicates it even further is that Gig Harbor, or excuse me, that Pierce County, we also asked them, and we would pay whatever it costs to have them come and do a drainage evaluation on our properties. So that they were protected, the salmon were protected, and the Endangered Species Act was enforced. And same thing, no response, didn't even refuse it, didn't even acknowledge it. So the downstream, um,
I need you to wrap it up. I've let you go longer. You can just kind of wrap it up, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Kuhn. So the downstream um stream on parcel oh two two one one eight two seven zero two is designated a salmon um protective stream by Pierce County. And it abuts our property and it does join the Scancy um drainage. Um, so I asked at the council and you, Mayor Kuhn, give us some serious considerations. And I thank you very much for allowing me to go beyond my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that's uh listening that would like to uh raise their hand or speak? Okay, I will close the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We have one item on old business. It's second read of ordinance fourteen fifty six. Why are weigh-in rack franchise agreement, uh, Public Works Director? This is our second reading of it. Uh, Jeff Langhill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, council, this is the second reading. It was brought back from the first reading at the February twenty second meeting. Um, so this, again, this is a telecommunications franchise agreement uh for fiber optic cable network uh that's being placed uh for benefit of Peninsula School Districts. Um, there were no comments from the first reading. I'd be happy to go into more detail if there are any questions, but um, I'm ready to hear any requests.
Okay, I think you solved a lot of it on your first reading. So Claire, we don't see any clarifying questions from council. Bob, do you have any public comment that was written on this item? I will open up the public comment now.
There, I do have not received any written comments on this item.
Okay, I see that there's one attendant that would like to speak, so now I will see from the list, lost my, just to say, I I learned how to find my cursor from one monitor to the other. Okay. Uh, caller uh twelve fifty three, uh, you're back home. You'd like to speak for three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Kuhn, city council members. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, they can.
Great, um, name Thomas Wick, again, Hunt Street Northwest, Gig Harbor. Um, I'm specifically have a concern and a question about section thirteen, emergency work, dangerous conditions. It says, uh, section thirteen point one, in the event of an emergency in which any of the franchisees facilities located in or under any street endangers the property, life, health and or safety of any person or if franchisee's construction area is otherwise in such a condition as to immediately endanger the property, life, health or safety of an individual, franchisee shall immediately take the proper emergency measures to repair its facilities to cure or remedy the dangerous conditions for the protection of property, life and health and safety. I'm not going to finish reading it, but it's there in front of you. So Mayor Kuhn, ladies and gentlemen of the council, here's the concern. I sent photographs of a tree that landed on our home. Um, smashed our back porch, it damaged our roof. And this tree collapsed and what we found underneath this tree, it was about a hundred years old and about a hundred and forty, hundred and fifty feet tall, was underwater. So this dug fir, dug fir trees don't grow in water, just to let you know, and you can ask your experts. So my concern is, I alerted Mayor Kuhn, the city of Gig Harbor, that their drainage from their from within the city of city limits was causing us um basically putting our life, health and safety in question. And what happens is Gig Harbor turns around and up permits some other developments that even after we were, Mayor Kuhn, city of council was informed, we did not have a drainage to accommodate it. It was allowed to move forward. So my concern is, I see this language in this document that you guys present, and it specifically talks about, hey, we will not allow anything to happen that puts the property, life, health or safety of an individual at risk. But yet Gig Harbor allows development to proceed after they were informed there is no drainage to accommodate it. And worse, they refuse to do a drainage evaluation to confirm the validity of this of this position. And worse than that, the city of Gig Harbor, three years after approving a preliminary plat reaches out to a developer and says, where exactly are you discharging your stormwater runoff? And that is a city document that was given to me, so it's not in question as far as validity. So again, I, I, when I saw this, I was just like, wow, on one hand, the city is like, hey, we're going to look out for citizens, you know, um, property, their life, their health and safety. But on the other hand, we're going to look the other way. And that's the concern I have this evening. And I I really asked that the council members and that Mayor Kuhn, you sit down and have a discussion about this because I sent you the photographs. And I'm very concerned that I'm at the level of disregard that we're, that we're, we've been shown, I guess, is the best words way to put that. So I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you, Mayor Kuhn.
Thanks. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to um raise their hand? Okay, we will close the public comment and uh any, any council deliberation on this? Okay, uh, I've got a hand up, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, since there's no deliberation, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance one four five six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's see. Councilmember Woo was second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay, if I don't hear all the ayes, I'm going to, that I'm, or abstain or nay, I'm going to imagine it's all passed. So seven, it passed seven to zero. Thank you. New business item one, resolution twelve oh one, city assumption of the transportation benefit district. Uh, Finance Director David Rodenbaum.
Uh, good, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, members of the council. This, this resolution is simply to set a public hearing for council to consider an ordinance which will still have two readings under which the city council will assume all rights, powers, functions and obligations of the city of Gig Harbor Transportation Benefit District. And just a little background, uh, the district was established in July of twenty eighteen under ordinance thirteen ninety two. We're proposing the hearing date for March twenty second. And what this does is it just simplifies the the functions. If we stay separate, we're required to operate as two separate organizations. So there's set, going to be separate, regular, separate meetings. There's going to be uh, there's there's separate costs, separate insurance, separate audits. And it just confuses thing and nothing really changes because it's contiguous with the city and the city council is the board of the transportation benefit district. It's a procedural thing, and I suspect what happened back when we were in transition through city administrators, the district was established. And somehow we fumbled and we didn't follow through with this step because this step, I believe, was always intended. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Sounds good. Sounds like some house cleaning to do. So get it in line. Uh, Councilmember Frandich.
Yeah, it is, uh, I guess this is a question for Mr. Kenny. Is, is that what happened that when we established the TBD? Uh, back in two thousand eighteen that, um, this was the next step that just didn't happen or? Why didn't we do it this way in the first place?
Uh, great question. I can't speak to the direct intention. I, I was kind of coverage, uh, city at that time. But you, you do have to take it in this procedural order. Obviously, the gap in time could have been shorter, but we could not, the city could not have started. With it within the city. That's not how the statute is written. It, it is a little wonky admittedly. Uh, but this is the procedural order that it would go in. And as to the gap, I can't speak to that. I would have presumed that it was intended and just got lost in the tracks possibly.
Okay, but it, it was, the procedure would have been the procedure one way or another. We're just getting to it now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we see any other questions from council? So. I will open up the public comment on this. Any written comments from the public? Bob?
Mayor, I did not receive, we did not receive any written comments on this item.
Okay, I see one from the attendees. Now I will go to. To the attendees. Uh, yes, Tom Wick, you're on.
Wow, I'm like your speed dial. That's kind of cool. Hey, you guys know my address. Hey, um, I have some concerns and questions about this. I know you guys don't respond to questions, but I'm going to still pose my comment as a question. So one of the concerns I have is, um. Um, currently the TBD is a separate organization within the city requiring separate meetings, insurance, audits and administration. Um, and I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to beat up city council too much here because I just learned this morning. I was actually looking at one of the AWC videos because I was kind of curious. And I didn't realize that when a city government is in a strong mayor. Um, form of government that city council members' hands are effectively tied for the most part. Um, outside of legislation and I didn't realize that till this morning. So. Um, this is more directed at, at you, Mayor Kuhn. Um, but the concern I have is that. Um, I, based on what I've seen and what the actions that city council has taken. Um, to include their inactions. I would think broadening, um, the city councils and the administration's authority at this time might not be the best idea. And I know there was some discussion about changing Gig Harbor's form of government in prior city council meetings. And that's something I strongly, strongly support. Because I do believe that the majority.
Something the TBD is the subject we're talking to. If you started with that.
Well.
So you, you can wrap it up. Please go back to the issue we're talking about.
Okay, I'm saying that I do not believe this should be approved and therefore I have to follow it up with a basis or a reason for that. So please allow me to continue. So I don't believe in Gig Harbor's current form of government, it would be appropriate to expand the power or the authority. Of the current government until such time that the citizens change that form of government to where city council members.
Okay, I will stop you. TBD was set up by council. And it's chaired by council. It's not done by the mayor, chaired by council. So thank you very much. We will go on.
Well, I'm not done yet, Mayor. I'm not done.
No, you're, you're not talking about the issue. You're not talking about the issue we're talking about. I gave you an opportunity to talk about the TBD.
You've talked about.
Please Molly. And you, we're not going to talk about other issues. You talk about the subject at hand. Or then you wait till it's something that's not on the agenda. Okay, we're going, any other person from the public? Okay, so with that, we've got.
I, I moved to adopt resolution twelve oh one.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. I'm sorry, abstain. Motion passes. Second item, new business, is Stinson Avenue overlay and intersection improvements. Public Works Construction Contract Awarded Contract Amendment Number Nine for Construction Support Services and Professional Service Contract for Materials Testing Services. Jeff, you're on again.
Yes, thank you, last time. So as you saw in this council bill, what staff is requesting, we, is the award of a construction contract, materials testing contract, construction support. From the design consultant and change order authority. Uh, you also see that we did receive six bids for this, uh, in this public works contract advertisement. Uh, which, uh, from recent bids, that's a pretty good number of bidders. Uh, and you'll also notice that, uh. The bids, at least the majority of the bids were closely clustered near the low bidder. And, uh, all of these bids were well below the final engineer's estimate of one point eight something million dollars. So. Uh, it was, it was, uh, it was a bid that we're fairly happy with. I wanted to, before we get too far into this, and this is going to back, go back to address the council member Heinz's question on this project itself. The, the key component of this intersection project is the intersection roundabout construction. And that requires intersection closure. This contract work also includes other work, uh, along Stinson Avenue primarily removing. Existing asphalt, replacing with new asphalt, constructing some ADA improvements and then reconstructing the intersection of Grandview and Stinson also. Uh, but one of the most impactful sections of this project is going to be, uh, the. Temporary closure, uh, of the intersection of Rosedale Stinson. I'm going to bring up now, share a screen with you, the detour plan that was provided. Uh, is part of the, um. Construction bid package. So you, if you can see this, I know it's a little small, but, uh, we have to do an intersection closure. Right at the intersection of Rosedale Stinson. In order to accommodate this and to have the work done as quickly as possible. Uh, the contract allows the contractor ten full calendar days of twenty-four seven closure of that intersection. We know that pain is going to be painful for the public, um, but we want to be able to have the contractor get in and get out quickly. All, all local access is going to be allowed to be provided. You can see in these areas, there's going to be areas where the roads closed, but. But local access can be provided up until the actual intersection itself, the intersection is going to be closed. We have not yet received a request from the contractor to do night work. There are some residents in there and we're hesitant to grant that if requested, but the. The contract doesn't outright allow the contractor to do night work. Um, we also have a requirement in our contract that the contractor. Will have to do this intersection closure of maximum ten calendar days. Uh, within the first thirty working days of the contract. So in other words, we want the contractor to get in, do this work first and then, and then do ancillary work and just laying closures here and there, uh, after we get now. I want to be very clear that the, the closure of the intersection is ten calendar days. So that's going to span weekends. Uh, but the, the requirement for contractors to get in within the first thirty working days, those are weekdays. So, um, that equates to. About seven weeks. So the contractor has to, from the date of execution of the contract, which we have to do some paperwork to go back and forth after it's awarded. Uh, the contractor is going to have to get in and it within thirty working days. Right now, we think the contract is going to be. Uh, first working day is going to be March twenty ninth. So, um, that'll put us within seven weeks. Essentially, the contractor's going to have to come in, do this work and be done with it. And then, uh, the contractor's going to do, um, additional ancillary lane closures. For the duration of the contract, they should be done with this work, uh, before the end of summer. So hopefully, Councilmember Heinz, that answers your question on. On duration and interaction with the Harborview Stinson construction project because we won't at this point with that sewer issue. We probably will not be awarding a contract until late summer on the Harborview Stinson work. Any questions on the contract or other questions about the work itself?
So you're saying this would start late March, correct?
Uh, well, what we're saying is the contractor will like their first working day of the contract will likely be March twenty ninth. And then at that, as we get closer to that March twenty ninth date, they will have a bed, they will contractor will provide us with a construction schedule. And we'll have a better idea of exactly when the contractor is supposed to come in and do that ten day closure. Of course, that's weather dependent. They might have to push it off if the weather's.
So we're hoping our school, our high schools are going to open soon. So have we notified the, or can we notify the school district? So that all the schools that use this and maybe there's others to notify that they're, they've, they've got the heads up.
Yes, and the school district, we have a whole list of agencies that we notify, fire department, utilities, garbage collection, school district. And they've been already notified that we're doing this work and will, uh, will remind them in, as we get closer that. And when we have a for sure date from the contractor, when the intersection will actually be closed.
Right. Any clarifying questions to Jeff from council? Councilmember Heinz?
Yeah, so, so during this period, if I read the map correctly, the only way to get downtown. Is via Soundview or Walachia?
Soundview, Walachia or Burnham. Correct.
Okay, okay, you can still get down Burnham. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, okay, that, that's, that's key. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Bob, any, now I'm going to open up the public comment. Any written public comments on this council bill?
Mayor, we did not receive any written comments on this item.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Frandich. Since I opened up the public comment, I'll let you speak right after I close it, if that's okay. Yes, um, Mr. Wick, we were going to take public comments from the, uh, the call-ins. Mr. Wick, you're, uh, able to talk now.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Kuhn. Um, by the way, you cut me off last time on the last comment, just let you know.
I know. Please.
This issue.
Please stick to the issue and I will give you your full three minutes.
All right, thank you, sir. You're very kind. So, um, you guys are doing a project and, um, Mr. Langhelm. Of course, did a presentation and the city, you know, the title of the document is Business of the City Council, City of Gig Harbor, da-da-da. And it specifically talks about what the Public Works Construction Project Award is, the contract amendment. Um, specifically for professional services, et cetera, materials, et cetera. So my question and my concern is, is that I couldn't, this process never happened. When that twenty-four inch culvert was replaced that crosses Hunt Street Northwest at the intersection of Scancy and Hunt. And, and I want someone to chime in and say that it did happen and I just couldn't find it. But there's no record of council having any deliberations. There was no discussion about traffic impacts or the cost or anything else. In fact, I didn't see anything going before the council about bids going out for the work. And it's my understanding that the city of Gig Harbor, and this is, I, I, I want someone to chime in and tell me I'm incorrect if I'm wrong. But I didn't see any bids going out for multiple contractors to bid to replace city-owned, city, city-operated infrastructure. In fact, it was my understanding that a private entity actually hired a private contractor. To remove and replace city-owned and operated infrastructure. And nobody's stopping me and saying I'm incorrect, so I'm assuming I'm correct. So can somebody explain why the city is working out? It looks like what, over almost one point four four one million dollars for work to be done? To improve city-owned property. But yet they were able to get a trunk line for an entire drainage, the Scancy Avenue Drainage replaced for free? Because I think that's a, that's a question that the city council or, well, I would think the citizens of Gig Harbor would want to know. Why are they getting something that had to have cost, I'm estimating at least hundreds of thousands of dollars to get completed? But yet they're paying one point, like actually it's one point seven two three million. Of Gig Harbor's, um, citizens' funds for another city project. So that's, that's an inconsistency, I think, that the current administration owes, um, the citizens of Gig Harbor. So I thank the ladies and gentlemen of the council and you, Mayor Kuhn, for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? That's a caller in. Okay, I will close the public comment now and council will deliberate. Councilmember Frandich.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so. I, I'm just, Jeff, I'm just wondering why we need to have this construction support in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars on this project?
The designer is Excel Tech. They're the engineer of record. Um, they need to be able to certify some things. They also have some expertise that we don't have. They also have some. Time capacity that we don't have. And so all of those factors, uh, are. What developed that scope of work for them to support it.
So Excel Tech did the design?
Correct.
And, and they're doing the construction, this construction, uh. Sub, uh, management?
Yes, but they're, they're not doing everything. I mean, there, there's some things that we as staff are doing and there's some things that Excel Tech will do. So it's a partnership, but because of limited staff availability, we're having Excel Tech support us. And there's also some things we just, we can't do as, since we didn't design it.
Is this on a, uh, hourly basis?
I believe it's in a, it's a, it's a hourly basis with an amount not to exceed.
Right. Well, um. I'll let, uh, any other council people comment before I, uh, make any further comments.
Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, I guess following on the.
I'm sorry, can you talk a hair louder?
Yeah, th- this would imply that the contractor, the construction contractor. Does not have capability to follow the prints and the designs of the design contractor.
Yeah.
If we have to, if we have to substitute. Somebody else to follow the construction to make sure the construction follows the design. Um, that says the construction guy doesn't have. Um, uh, capability. To inspect and make sure that they are following the design.
No, what it is, is the owner of a project, we, we are just ensuring that we are getting what the contractor is providing. It's not that they don't have the ability to, it's that they might not, they either might misread something or they might. Uh, try and take a shortcut that we won't allow. And owners representatives are always on construction contracts, whether it's public or private. Um, and, and i- if I were to show you some examples in the distant past of when the city didn't pay as close attention to a contractor. You will see that there are many added costs that come forward in operations and maintenance because things weren't captured during construction. And there, it's a, it's, it's expensive, but it's a huge investment for the future to be able to make sure that we're getting the product that was designed instead of finding out later that a shortcut was taken.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we do this on all projects actually because of that, correct?
We, we do this on all projects, yes.
Um, well, we, we don't have a purchasing department. That's the problem. It seems to me that somewhere in the construction contractors. Um, uh. Rack up of costs, someone or I'm sure they're going to, they're going to talk about some sort of inspection. Where they follow up and they charge us to do it, okay? To make sure that what they're doing follows the design. And now we're saying we got a backstop to that because that doesn't work and we pay for it twice, basically.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that logic. Um, it's, it's something that, uh. Contractors expect and, uh, outright, uh, welcome that we are there to make sure that we're getting the product.
Okay, but by the way, this is reminiscent of the. Okay, so, but by the way, this is reminiscent of the automobile industry fifty years ago. That's exactly what we used to do. Because we knew all the contractors screwed up, so we always had a backstop. And then we pulled the backstop away from them. And guess what? Some of them died. And the good ones survived, by the way. Okay.
Okay, God. Councilmember Woo.
So I I'm actually happy that we have someone looking over their shoulder and we do have a city representative that's going to be watching what's going on. I'm also really happy that the project um down on Harborview Drive with the sewer is not going to impede this project. So I I'll I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Great, okay, I don't see it. Councilmember Frannich.
Well, uh, you know, this gets, I guess, back to Councilmember Heinz's uh conversation during the budget of last year. Um, maybe we, I mean, th- these construction management on on these uh projects is just absolutely ridiculous. Uh, four hundred thousand for the sidewalks on Burnham. Now we got ninety-nine thousand dollars here. You know, I I I know I keep hearing that staffs, you know, we've got staff problems, but. All all this money that we we are paying to middlemen because our staffs can't manage these uh projects. Could be going a heckle a lot further to help our um more needy elderly residents in the city. Um. So I I I have never been a big fan of this project from day one. I think uh i- it wasn't needed to do any of these projects on this stretch of Stinson. Um, it's one point seven two three million dollars. Uh, I know that, you know, there's a majority of that's grant money, but um. I cannot support uh this project.
Right, um, one question. Bob, from the cities you've worked at, isn't it similar that cities can't handle all the projects themselves and that they have to? Get assistance from uh contractors?
Well, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, it's quite common. Jeff spoke to it very eloquently. Uh, this is the cost of doing business and we have to get these projects done. You're either going to have staff, we're going to be paying for these types of oversight. Uh, management issues, or you'd have to hire a consultant, and I think this is the best way to go about it, given our our limited capacity at the moment.
Right. Councilmember Heinz. Oh, you're muted, Councilmember Heinz.
I I am supportive of this project, but I I'm I must confess um. Going through this, going through all the issues that we've had now on. What I would call emergency issues or semi-emergency issues that come up. And it seems like there's just a uh lift station number six, uh well, number three, I can go right down the line. And every one of them basically routes an engineer off a different direction called, no, you got to do this now, you got to do that, you got to. I I will save it later for the comments, but uh more and more I'm being convinced that uh the. F T Es that uh I proposed earlier and that we got ought to be permanent employees called, this is not going to go away. This this thing is just eating us alive. It just won't let go of us. Uh, so I'll stop right there. I'm supportive of the project.
Thank you. Okay, um, do I have a motion? Let's see, just a, uh, yeah, do I have a motion? Oh, Councilmember Woo, I'm sorry.
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a public works contract with Miles Resources LLC. In an amount not to exceed one million four hundred forty-one thousand ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents. For the Stinson Avenue overlay and intersection improvement projects. And I move to authorize the mayor to execute contract amendment number nine for construction support services. With X-Tech Consulting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. To also authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract for materials testing with construction testing laboratories, Inc. In an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars. And to move to authorize the city engineer to approve additional project expenditures up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Councilmember Rodenberg second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Motion passed six to one. Uh, council reports, council comments. We'll start with the two that are here and then we'll hear from council planning, well, we'll hear from all council. Planning and Building Committee, March first, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, the Planning and Building Committee met on March the first. We continued our review and understanding of the growth target process, the population and. How's. Unit growth target. Uh, but uh, we had a representative, the Pierce County Long Range Planning Office, provide a presentation on the countywide. Building lands process with uh tent, I mean, cover. Uh, the buildable lands process is critical to the growth target determination. And um. I I guess what I'm going to say is I I realize this report may sound redundant. Uh, but the the future population and dwelling unit targets for Gig Harbor. Are going to have a major effect for some time on the character and quality of life going forward here in Gig Harbor. And um, the the best example I can I can tell you is immediately after the last recession, we all saw what happened. Uh, the population of Gig Harbor exploded, okay, and many of the. Incentives that were in the code at that time to promote growth just happened all at once and uh. We we really can't let that happen again. So I feel very strongly that the Plan and Building Committee. Uh, remain totally focused on this, uh, on the growth targets process and and on the content. Because this this will have a major impact on Gig Harbor for years to come. Because we're talking targets in two thousand forty-four and um. We just don't want a repeat of what we got out of back in two thousand eighteen. We legislated our way out of it. So anyhow, that's the report from the Planning and Building Committee. Uh, Councilmember Remarkly, Councilmember Frannich, any thing that I missed?
No, I I think that was a good report and I um think Councilmember Heinz is right on on the importance of this and. Um, I thank staff at the time and it's very uh. Important and I'm very thankful that uh. The council has been involved in these um allocations in a very early process. Um, I think it's very important and um. I thank staff for that.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Councilmember Frannich. And our next is Park Commission, March third, was attended by Councilmember Aubersold. Would you like to give a report?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Uh, the Park Commission meeting, March third, as you said, the minutes were approved. Uh, the first item of business. Uh, Director Langhelm gave us a report on conservation futures and the grant application process. Uh, we also uh did an inventory of park uh facility discussion. Led by Louis, Lewis, Luis Teeman. Uh, and each member assigned parks uh for review by council members or committee members, I'm sorry. They also uh discussed the create or adopt a park program. They talked about the Cushman Trail etiquette signage on that. It was not budgeted and they are concerned about that. They gave a uh, our Director Langhelm gave a Parks Update Report. Uh, regarding Veterans Parks Opening, Austin's Parks Art Insulation. Uh, Wilkinson Park Pond, apparently a citizen wants to put a boat access to that. And um, that interview process is happening for the Parks Manager position. Uh, we had a committee report from Roger Henderson. He discussed the leaf line trails. Uh, and we announce, or I'm sorry, Sarah McDonald's uh term uh has come to an end. She has served on the committee. For two and a half terms, so uh quite an extensive um. Time given to our ci- our ci- city by our citizen there. And we took public comments and then we adjourned. And that is the conclusion of my uh report.
Thank you. Great, uh, council comments in general. Councilmember Heinz.
Uh, yes, um, I think the uh new elementary school up there on Harbor Hill is a great accomplishment. And I really look forward to uh. Joining that celebration in September or October or whatever it is and walking across. Borgon and walking across Harbor Hill with the new yellow rapid flashing cross. Uh, crosswalk, uh lights flashing merrily. So as we work on our immediate problems, uh, let's not forget that one.
I I thought you were going to walk across to our sports field, which was.
That comes later.
Okay, I know, that was a little premature, so the crosswalk, we'll start with that. Thank you. Other council comments? Okay. Well, I think if we've, we've got announcement of other meetings. We have the Public Works Committee on March ninth at three P M. That's tomorrow. Council Study Session, March eleventh at three P M. And um, thank you for, we know your excuse from that, Councilmember Rodenberg. Uh, if you can, if you can listen in, we appreciate your notice ahead of time, too. Pub Boards and Commissions candidate review, March fifteenth at three P M. And Inter Governmental Affairs Committee, March twenty-second at four P M. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
All those in favor, or is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Molly, you can't second, I'm sorry. She always got away with it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.
Good night.